Thought for today is my fellow American, ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. That's John F. Kennedy. I'm gonna go ahead and seven number two, I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. Um, I'm gonna ask tonight if Commissioner Shoakes, if you would, if you would, lead us in front tonight if you would. Greatly appreciate it. I'm gonna get you to unmute your, there we go.
Okay, thank you. Alright, let's bow our heads in prayer. Dear Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and for all the many blessings you've bestowed on us. We thank you for this great group of people that come together each two weeks and in between to do the work of the county. Thank you for all the citizens and how they have worked so tirelessly during this time. We've really demonstrated what it means to be a community and I thank you and I know that all of us thank you. Be with us tonight as we make our decisions. Take care of us and watch over us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, amen. Guys, again, I thank you Commissioner Shoakes. Again, I'm gonna make sure that we don't leave out the pledge. Uh, I'm asking Commissioner Edwards, if you would, to lead us in our pledge tonight. The citizens have spoken and they want to make sure that we do not leave this pledge and leeches out, so sir, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and just.
Thank you, sir. Thank you much. Next item on the agenda is item number three. The adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, you had an opportunity to get the agenda tonight. I think a motion of approval, please.
So moved. Commissioner District Two.
Second District Three.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Shoakes. Any discussion? All in favor?
That's an aye from District One.
Thank you, sir.
Aye from District Two.
Thank you, sir.
Aye from District Three.
Thank you, ma'am.
Aye for District Four.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you, sir. The agenda is, it passes five to zero, thank you. Next, next on the agenda is the chairman's report. Just a quick update, guys, you know early voting has started. At the 2:30 PM today, absentee ballots, application process was 7,123. Absentee ballots received is 7,070. Voted in person is 420. And our Board of Elections are following the CDC guidelines and they doing a great job, doing a great job. Thank you. That's all I have. Mr. County Manager, do your report, please.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've got a few slides that I would like to, like to show you tonight. If, we're gonna share a screen here. Go ahead to the first slide, please.
Hey, Mr. Kerr.
Yes.
Can we back up for a quick moment?
Sure, be glad to.
Please, sir, if you don't mind.
No, don't mind at all.
Before you share your screen, um, I'm moving pretty quickly here because I know we got a long night and I apologize for that. But we're gonna open it up now for citizens' comments, citizen comments. Um, I skipped over citizen comments. This is, this is an opportunity for citizens to make comments on agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Um, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. If you would, please, press star six and unmute your phone. If you press star six, you can unmute your phone to make citizen comments. Thank you. Mr. Kerr, back, back to you, sir. Guys, remember, we do have zoning tonight at 7:30. Mr. Kerr.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, while we're getting the slides set up there, I would just like to say that we have met again yesterday with all of the department heads and constitutional officers. Um, we are, our preparations are moving along nicely for reopening, our scheduled reopening on January, or June 15. So, uh, we are making all the necessary preparations for doing so and I think we're gonna be on schedule and things will be, will be done well. Um, okay, uh, if you go to the next slide, please, thank you. Um, our, this slide shows you our, uh, population as of last, as of May 1st. We've had, um, our total population's 694. We've had one new hire and we've had 11 separations. Uh, next slide, please. This slide is the, uh, permits for the month of April. Um, we had, um, additional 30, um, primary residential, uh, permits that were issued. Um, the month prior, we had 40 plus, which was running a little bit ahead of, um, last year. And so for a total estimated cost of all of the permits was a little over five and a half million dollars. Next slide, please. Um, you can see the work orders, um, District One had 82 and also in, uh, down to District Five, which had 82 as well. The Elming projects that were there were worked on in April. Uh, Almond Road and Social Circle Road, it was, uh, crosses District One and Five. Uh, we've been working on a major project over in Riverwalk Farms. Um, and if you've been over there, you've seen where a lot of the oak trees that were planted along the, the street front there um, had damaged the sidewalks in a lot of places, so we removed the trees and we're preparing the sidewalk. Also, there was an 84-inch culvert that had, um, been replaced over on Channing Coke Road. That road had been closed for a little while while we were trying to finish up repairs and we did complete that, so. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, a couple of pictures here. This is a picture of the senior services expansion as the work continues there. You see they've got all of the, um, good, the exterior, all the walls up, most of the interior walls are up and framed. Um, and you can see they've got the, um, stucco and all on the exterior wall here. And so they're moving along very quickly now, uh, with the progress there. So, next slide, please. And this is a photo of the, um, animal services. The, uh, this structure to the right there is the new, uh, building. Uh, all of the exterior has been completed on that there in the process of putting in the, the runs and the pens and all of the interior rooms, uh, and spaces that'll be in that building um, and have a connection to the old building. The old building has been, uh, they've been doing the demolition on the old building, the animals are being stored in a temporary site. Uh, and they've completely gutted, uh, the old building to make sure that we get all of the, um, as you know, they did have a, have a problem in there at one point with, um, bugs and so forth, and so we've completely gutted it and we're gonna be having a, there's some addition to it. We're building some additional, uh, holding areas for quarantined animals and, um, that'll be completely refurbished. And that project too is moving along very, very nicely, so. Um, we should be done with both of those projects, uh, in the, around August, so. Weather holding and so forth. Uh, next slide, please. And this is some of the, um, our seniors over at the Turner Lake Park Parking Lot. I wanna make a note here that, let everybody know that May is Ameri-, older Americans Month. So every Tuesday over there at Turner Lake Park, they're having special activities for the seniors. Um, this is a, uh, car exercise and cardio. The seniors drive up and then there's different activities for them that they can do next to their car or in front of it or, uh, and so that's what they're doing, some exercise there. There's drive-up lunch where they can pick up their lunches and you can see the, uh, the chairman there and I believe Amanda, uh, shoemaker from our HR department is there as well. Uh, and of course Frida Reed and her staff. And then, uh, on the bottom there, you'll see where they're handing out, in both places they're handing out food and all for the, um, for the seniors. And then, um, this, which was kind of interesting, was Car Bingo. The seniors were give, were given play cards and they would, uh, call out the, the numbers and then, you know, do what they would do with the bingo. And, um, so they played Car Bingo, it was pretty successful and everybody had a lot of fun. Uh, Brian and, um, Walker, my staff, were, uh, over there helping, um, everybody with the Car Bingo, so. And our hats off and kudos to Frida and her staff for coming up with some really unique, um, fun and creative ways to keep the seniors involved during all of the quarantine and all the, all the time when they're not able to really to, uh, conduct their regular services, so hats off to them. Next slide, please. And, uh, this is, uh, the early voting, as the chairman mentioned, began May 18th. Um, that we did have some tents put up so that people, uh, could maintain the six-foot distance and also uh, because invariably, uh, we have inclement weather or extremely hot weather. And, uh, it looks like this week is gonna be raining all week and then the following weeks are supposed to be pretty warm, so. Um, it looks like, pardon, pardon me. The right decision was made to have some tents put up for people so that they would be, um, able to be comfortable. And, uh, so that's all the slides we have. Thank you for letting me show you a few things that are going on, um, tonight. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions? For Mr. Kerr? Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is item number eight, consent agenda. Commissioners, you had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda tonight. I think a motion that we approve it, please.
So moved by District One.
Thank you, sir.
Second by District Two.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair. I do have a question. Item number eight C, which is, um, the, the
The minute?
The cost of requesting the approval of the professional services, is that still in the, in the consent agenda? For the GIS?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, Commissioners, that was moved, uh, actually now item number 10, um, under your regular agenda.
Okay.
That was moved this afternoon, or, yeah, this afternoon or this morning, I believe. So it's in the revised, uh, agenda that was sent out.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, just clear, just confirming that that's the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
District One is an aye.
District Two is an aye.
District Three is an aye.
District Four, aye.
District Five is aye.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Next on the agenda, let's see here. Next on the agenda, the agenda is, uh, finance. Ms. Brittany?
Hey, I'm here. Okay, I'm gonna, um, share my screen, so give me just one second to do that. Okay, do y'all see that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright, tonight, um, I will be presenting the April 2020 financials and this is our 10th month of the year, so we should be trending roughly around 83% of our expenditures by now. I'll start with our revenues first. So for the month of April, our revenues came in at $2.7 million. Our revenues were, were at 93.88% of our budgeted revenues for the year. And in this next slide, you can see that our April revenues came in pretty comparable to our revenues that we generate in our non-property tax collecting months, such as August, September, February, and March. And I will mention that April revenues do include March sales tax, so we still have not seen April sales tax from the state yet. Our general fund expenditures for the month of April were 4.6 million. And our year-to-date, we're at 54.8 million and that puts us at 76.47 for the year, so we are trending below that 83% mark right now in our expenditures. And this is a graph and you can see that our expenditures for April were down a bit. And I think we can probably contribute that to just some of the, the nature of going on in the county right now with a lot of things being not open full-time. And this is just a graph and, um, to show that right now our revenues for the year and our expenditures for the year and currently our revenues are 12.4 million over expenditures, which is not uncommon for this year, this time of year due to the fact that our property tax revenue has pretty much been almost fully collected. Here's a summary of the enterprise funds for the year. So, revenue to date for the water fund is at 87% and 8.3 million. For solid waste, we're at 4.6 million and that's 89% of their budgeted revenues. And Gaithers Fund is 475,000, which is 88% of their revenues. The water fund expenses date, they're at 47%. And the water fund is at 70% and Gaithers and Factory Shoals Fund is at 58%. For the SPOLOST accounts, our 2005 SPOLOST, we currently just have the debt, um, the COOP 6 debt remaining, which we have available, $771,263 available to put towards our COOP 6 debt. 2011 SPOLOST, we currently have a remaining balance of 2.2 million and the main projects to still wrap up in this SPOLOST are Fire Station Eight and the Historic Jail. 2017 SPOLOST, we are, um, our current remaining available balance in the 2017 SPOLOST is 17.9. We do currently have bonded projects, so we are able to move forward on those projects. And our collections for April, which is March, sales tax revenue was 1,0178,685. So currently, we are trending 6.2 million over our anticipated collections. Our current balance in the Impact Fee Fund is 1,812,644. And that wraps up the presentations, so I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brittany. Guys, any questions tonight? Commissioner Edwards?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason?
Um, no, Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Commissioner Shoakes?
I do not have any questions for Brittany at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
No question.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Cowan?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Brittany. Uh, next on the agenda, um, is item number 10. Uh, GIS requested approval of a professional service proposal, um, from G, GIS Inc. in the amount of 20,000 for GIS consulting support. Uh, Mr. Kerr? Mr. Kerr, you there?
Whoops, sorry, Ms. Chairman. I forgot to unmute myself. I've asked Tim Lawrence to be on the call tonight and I see he is on, so, um, and I've asked him to give you, uh, to be here to tell you a little bit about what GIS Inc. does, what the services are that they provide and the, um, why it is that we will be using them. So, uh, Tim, if you would, if you would, please go ahead and, um, jump in here and, and tell the board about other services also. If you would, explain to them, uh, what, um, your process was for selection on GIS Inc. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Uh, Tim, I wanna remind everybody that we do have zoning tonight, uh, in six minutes, so please be mindful of that. Thank you. If you would, sir, um, push star six and unmute your phone.
Okay, is that better?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Uh, thank you, Lloyd. Thank you, Chairman Baines. Evening, Commissioners. Yes, as Lloyd said, um, I'll tell you a little bit about the consultant that we've been using for a number of years. Um, you all, uh, approved a professional service block, a support block, back in 2017. Uh, GIS Inc. is out of Alabama. They've been helping us with, uh, what I consider high-level IT tasks, such as, um, a database, uh, rebuild, uh, enhanced security, um, helping us build a test environment, a sandbox, if you will, um, and offering just general tech support and things like that. Um, and then for this, uh, proposal, it was us reaching out to about a half a dozen, uh, engineering GIS firms and asking for, um, what their, uh, labor rate is, uh, for high-level IT folks. Um, and we, we asked for, I think, six and we got about four or five. And I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Wow, that was quick. Any question, guys? Commissioner Edwards?
None at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a quick question. I was looking at the funding source where it's 50% for GIS Department Professional Services account and 50% from City of Covington. So are those, um, accounts, those funds are already been allocated within those accounts? There's no additional monies that we'll need to provide for this 20,000? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Both, both amounts are, are budgeted and nothing additional is required.
Okay, great. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you so much, Tim, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Shoakes? Any questions?
Um, Tim, just a quick review of the fact that this is a cost share with the city and have they already approved their cost share proportion?
Um, yes, ma'am. They, they approved it during, uh, the city council budget, um, request last year. I, I was a city employee at the time and I prepared and submitted, um, the, uh, both the county and city budget. It was approved and I confirmed with, uh, the city's engineering manager today that funds are available, so yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. No other questions.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Henderson, any questions?
I have no question.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan, any questions? Commissioner Cowan?
No, sir, no question. No questions.
Thank you. I think a motion, please.
This is District Three. I'm for approval of the shared cost funding for the professional services proposal from GIS in the amount of a total of $20,000, uh, 10,000 of which will come from the Newton County Board of Commissioners.
Second District Two.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Shoakes and second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor?
That's an aye from District One.
Thank you, sir.
Aye from District Two.
Thank you, sir.
Aye from District Three.
Thank you, ma'am.
Aye from District Four.
Thank you, sir.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim, for being with us tonight. It passes five to zero.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Chairman.
Guys, we're gonna get ready to, we've got a couple of minutes, but we're gonna get ready to move into our zoning tonight. Thank you, Judy is on with us tonight. Ms. Judy, are you on tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hope your day has been a great one.
Always.
I know you guys have been doing a lot, um, even with the county offices being closed to the public. I know you guys have been really, really busy.
Uh, yes, sir, we have and thank you for acknowledging that.
Thank you. It is approximately 7:29, um, 7:30 now, so we can go ahead and get going. Uh, we're gonna open up with, um, item number 14.
Uh, yes, sir, and if I may, I need to also share my screen, so I'm going, this is my first attempt, so let's see if we can get it first time. Can everyone see the screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's see if I can get it started. Uh, the first item on tonight's agenda is rezoning, R-E-Z, 2-0, that's, there is 0, there is 0, 0, 4. The property is located on Highway 36 in District Five and it's three separate properties, which is 10593, 10603, and 10701 Highway 36. Um, the request is to go from the existing zoning R2, single-family residential, to a commercial highway. You may remember this property, uh, as it came before you, um, a couple of months ago in order to seek a future land use map amendment. This property is located near our, um, road department transportation facility that public works down at Piper Road. Um, here is an aerial of the property itself. You will notice that each of the properties are starred and those are the ones under current request for rezoning. There is currently an existing tire shop on one of the properties that is a legal, non-conforming use in a residential zoning district and this will bring that property into compliance as well as it brings the other properties into the ability to develop commercially. Uh, again, you'll see that this is a single-family residential. It does a but other highway commercial. And although our transportation or our public roads facility is zoned R2, we do recognize that it is not operated as a residential zoning district. Again, the future land use is mixed-use commercial, which supports the rezoning request. Um, here is a, um, survey plat of the property and the site plan analysis. Based on the plat and the conceptual building plan submitted on February 26, 2020 by the applicant to the Development Services Department, staff offers the following considerations. The applicant has submitted a site plan that shows the layout of reconfiguring the properties from three parcels into two. This would allow for redevelopment of the property to construct the new to construct the new facility, to replace the existing tire shop business, and a second parcel to be redeveloped commercially. Conclusion: The proposed zoning and use is consistent with the policies and intent of the future land use and the comprehensive plan with approved zonings in the area. Given the land use and zoning designation of the surrounding properties, there is justification for approval. This is the site plan layout that we were referring to. And the last thing that staff would like to offer for the Board's consideration is the recommended conditions. If this petition is approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved CH Highway Commercial, conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. Number one, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards: Provide satisfactory ingress and egress for the site from Highway thirty-six to be approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. B, all landscape plans to be approved by the Department of Development Services. C, a minor plat for all parcels must be approved and reported prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. And D, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services before any construction or development on the property. This was heard by the Planning Commission at their April twenty-eighth meeting, and it was recommended with staff's condition, with, at a vote of four to zero. I believe I saw the applicant on the screen earlier. That would be, um, Mr. Jared Rutberg, and this is located in District Five.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, we're gonna open it up now for our public hearing. Um, we're gonna allow the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, um, an opportunity to speak. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. Uh, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Um, Jared Rutberg. First of all, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, Jared Rutberg. My home address is eight-one-eight-three Wood Street, Covington, Georgia. Um, and my, uh, business address, uh, is four-one-three-two Robinson Street in Covington also. Um, yeah, just like Judy said, we want to go and, uh, rezone. We've been going through this process of, uh, getting the property rezoned, uh, so that we could go and redevelop the existing, uh, business, and then also, uh, be prepared in the future for, uh, future redevelopment if we decide to do so. Judy pretty much covered everything that was, everything that was on there. Uh, I think it's pretty straightforward. It's, it's gonna align with everything that's, um, already happening along the corridor, uh, the stipulations that, that, uh, uh, Development Services had listed on there are not a problem at all. It'll be, um, we're happy to comply with those. And, um, I think it's actually gonna improve the safety, because we will go and reduce the number of, uh, entrances on Highway thirty-six, um, including we'll end up having, um, uh, back access, uh, through Piper Road is our plan, uh, as long as that's approved. So we think actually from a safety standpoint, it's gonna improve it, and we think from an appearance standpoint, it's gonna improve the area as well.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? If you will, Matt, uh, push star six and unmute your phone. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We al- also, um, allow ten minutes for those who want to oppose tonight. Um, you, if you will, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Uh, you may do so now. Please, ma'am, please, sir. Um, press star six, and you'll be able to unmute your phone. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Um, I think this is in District Five. Uh, Commissioner Cowan, are you there?
Yes, sir.
I seek a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, R-E-Z-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-four, uh, rezoning, um, Highway thirty-six, uh, be subject to the enumerated conditions listed by the planning board.
Second, District One.
It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
That's an aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye, District Three.
Commissioner Henderson, are you there?
Aye, District Four.
Thank you, sir.
Aye, District Five.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rutberg. The pass is five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Miss Judy, item number fifteen.
Yes, sir. The next item, um, as I get to our, uh, the next item for you this evening is a conditional use request. Um, that, and my apologies, um, that request is CUP-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one. That property is located in District One. It is a request to add an existing, um, add to an existing auto repair shop the ability to have twenty-five percent of the property designated for outdoor storage. The property is located at twenty-six-twenty-six Highway two-twelve, and it's currently zoned, uh, general commercial, so it does allow for the use on the property. It does, does not allow for the storage of the vehicles without an approved conditional use. Um, but petitioner is Mr. Jamie Humphries, and the applicant's intent again is to add to the existing auto repair business, which requires a conditional use permit to allow for outdoor storage. The subject site and surrounding area, the subject site contains two acres. It is zone CG, general commercial, and is, and it is located in an area surrounded by both commercial and residential properties. The site contains two six-thousand-square-feet commercial buildings, and a tire, and the tire-one LLC occupies five-thousand square feet of the building that faces Highway two-twelve. Here is the location. As you can see, Highway two-twelve runs along the south end of the property, and I believe that's Highway, uh, I believe that's Highway one sixty-two, perhaps, that runs on the intersection there. Um, it is a future, again, its zoning is general commercial. Its future land use is in a mixed-development area, so again, the county has envisioned this area to transition, uh, and allow for, uh, additional uses. Here is a site, or the survey plat of the property, and here is the site plan where the applicant has kind of indicated they want to use that little, um, almost like an appendage to the property there. Um, but we, uh, have, we do have recommended conditions, which would assure us of the twenty-five percent use. Um, so staff concl- uh, conclusion, staff recommends approval of the conditional use request to add to an existing auto truck repair business the ability to have twenty-five percent of the property designated for outdoor storage with the staff recommended conditions. The recommended conditions: Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit to add to the existing auto truck repair business the ability to have twenty-five percent of the property designated for outdoor storage subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards and regulations. All activities for auto truck repair shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building. Number two, prior to the allowance of any outdoor storage on the property, the applicant will provide a plan showing the area in which the storage will occur to be approved by the Department of Development Services. Three, outdoor storage is limited to twenty-five percent of the total lot, or zero-point-five-zero-seven-five acres of the two-acre tract. Four, outdoor storage areas and refuse containers shall be screened and buffered so as to not be visible from the public right-ofways or abutting residentially zoned properties. Five, wrecker service, salvage, abandonment, recovery, or repossession of automobiles and trucks, and temporary storage of said, said vehicles is prohibited. This case was also heard at the April twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting. It was also recommended with approval, um, of staff's recommended conditions by a vote of four to zero, and the applicant is Mr. Jamie Humphries, and I believe he is also on the call.
Thank you. Uh, Judy, one quick question. Um, what, what, what would they be storing out there?
It would be, and right now, he has the ability to, uh, to repair, uh, vehicles, but let's say that someone, um, if they were waiting on a part to come in, and they couldn't repair the vehicle immediately, well, right now, it would be unlawful for him to just be storing that in his yard or in the business, because he's not allowed any outdoor storage. But, um, should the conditional use be approved, then it just gives him the ability to, um, at, at my understanding of the nature of this business is you may get three or four people that need you in one day if you can take their vehicle, and you might can get to it that day, but it may be the next day again, or you may be waiting on a part. So having the ability to use this for storage would allow him to be able to better regulate, I guess, for a back, uh, for lack of a better word, regulate his ability to, um, have his, uh, have his use.
Okay. Thank you. Um, thank you. Want to open it up tonight, um, for our public hearing? Um, the applicant and those in, that want to speak in favor tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. Uh, the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, um, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Um, you have ten minutes to do so. Um, Mr. Humphries, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. We had a little bit of trouble last time at the zoning meeting, so. Um, so first of all, I want to say Judy does such a great job at what she does. I've, I've had, uh, the pleasure of dealing with her a couple of times on some different issues, uh, with some previous employers and, and, uh, she does a fantastic job, so I want to give her a pat on the back for that, but. So she, she hit it right on the head. It is, this business has grown so much in the last, um, almost year and a half now that the current flow of customers coming into the building, we, we run into situations where we just run out of time during the day. We can't get things done. Uh, we're having to wait on parts. Whatever the case may be, we may be waiting on the customer. Um, we need to be able to store those, those vehicles overnight. Um, we actually have it scheduled to start the fence on Tuesday, uh, the day after Memorial Day. However, that might get set back, because we're waiting on the adjacent property owner to do the survey on the land, so we make sure we're not encroaching on his property as well, so. Um, so that's in the works. Um, and then we're also speaking to him about actually purchasing that property for, uh, later use. But, um, that's, she, she kind of nailed everything on the head. That's, that's why I say she's very good at what she does, so. Um, appreciate you taking the time to hear me.
Thank you, sir. Um, anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone else want to speak in favor? If you would, uh, push stars, um, push, um, yeah, star six and unmute your phone, please, if you would. Anyone want to speak in favor? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose. Um, you also have ten minutes tonight. If you would, state your name and your address, please. Those that want to oppose, if you would, hit star six and unmute your phone. Anyone want to oppose? Thank you. Um, I think this is in District One. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I move for approval of conditional use permit, CUP-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one, subject to staff's recommendations.
Thank you, sir.
Second, District Two.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? Uh, Commissioner, um, Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've, I've, uh, I've gone at one and visited with Mr. Humphries on more than one occasion, and I am completely satisfied that, um, these conditions will be met, and the, the business actually provides an app, a, a, a great boost for that area. So I'm real pleased that his business is doing very, so well, and the fact that it's just really helped pump that area a little. Um, that part of my district was in need of some, uh, some economic development, I guess you could say. So, uh, I, I feel real good about the whole, the whole scenario. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All in favor?
That's an aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye from District Three.
Aye for District Four.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you so much. The pass is five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Humphries.
Thank you, guys. Be safe.
You too. Thank you, sir. Um, Miss, Miss Judy, item number sixteen.
Yes, sir. The next item before you is a modification request. This is MOD-two-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-one. This is located for the Chapel Heights subdivision, and the parcel size is approximately nineteen-point-nine-seven acres, and this is located in District One. Um, a little history on this property is that, um, in two thousand and five, the property was brought before the Board of Commissioners to seek a rezoning request, and that rezoning was approved, and it was approved with enumerated conditions. The applicant's intent this evening is to request to reduce one of the, uh, amend one of the conditions, which is condition one D of the rezoning case, R-E-Z-zero-five-dash-zero-zero-zero-two-nine. And that requirement, um, reads as, I apologize, uh, that requirement reads as follows: Um, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. Well, my goodness, I'm sorry. You think you're ready, and, oh, I'm sorry, that's actually condition one D. To the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows. Uh, D, the minimum heated floor area per dwelling unit shall be two-thousand-five-hundred square feet. The applicant is proposing a condition that would be the minimum heated floor area per dwelling unit shall be two-thousand square feet. Uh, again, this is the location. It's off of Richard Chapel's Road. There are no current homes in the subdivision. There are a total of eighteen lots. Um, so this would not, the change of a condition would not impact any of the current homes in the, or current, uh, area, as there are no homes currently, uh, built in the, um, in this subdivision. The property is zoned R-one, single-family residential, which, by the zoning ordinance, would require at least eighteen-hundred heated square feet. Again, the condition of zoning imposed was for twenty-five-hundred, um, heated square feet, and they're asking to reduce that to two-thousand square feet. Um, here's a survey plat of the property. Again, the rezoning happened in two thousand and five, and the final plat- Again, the rezoning happened in 2005, and the final plot was signed off on in 2007, so this is one of our vacant subdivisions that has not been completed at this time. And again, this slide here goes over the recommended conditions and then the recommended amended conditions. I do want to point out that there are other conditions of zoning that were placed at that time that will apply to this. All the other conditions of zoning, such as they prohibit vinyl siding, all the utilities must be underground, there must be sidewalks installed on both sides of the proposed road, adherence to buffers and so forth like that, all of those conditions will remain in effect. The only condition under modification tonight is the request to amend the heated square footage. Here is some examples of the sample house plans that the applicant is proposing to construct in the development. And, oops, excuse me, that was not supposed to be there. I don't know how to go back, y'all. But nonetheless, again, the applicant is requesting to modify Condition 1D, and this particular type of request, a modification, does not go in front of our Planning Commission. This would only be heard by the Board of Commissioners, as y'all are the legislative board in which has the right to impose conditions and amend those conditions. And I believe our applicant, Mr. Neil Cobal, I believe that he is on the call as well.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Judy, is this the property that's located right past the church?
I believe so. I believe so, Chairman. It is right off of Richard Chapel Road, right when you come out of the curve.
Okay. Is that District Two or District One?
That is District One. I would also like to mention that this is one of those areas that we tend to, because it's vacant and there's not a lot of homes developed on this stretch of road, it is an area where we get illegal dumping at times, so there is the hope that should this area develop, then we would have a little more activity in the area that may deter someone from thinking it's just a county road.
Well, I can tell you, Public Works went out there a couple of months ago and got a great deal of furniture, so we're going to open it up for a public hearing. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight, you do have 10 minutes tonight to do so. Please state your name, your address, please. I'm setting this seven o'clock now. You have 10 minutes to do so. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. I do see you, sir. I didn't get your name. I think it's Mr. Grant.
That's correct. I'm Mr. Grant. I'm with Liberty Communities. Mr. Cobal was actually on another zoning meeting at the same time right now. So I appreciate you, Judy, laying that out for us. That was definitely, definitely exactly what we're looking for, that reduction in the square footage. Back in 2007, the subdivision was plotted, and we feel that in those last 13 years, it's been sitting vacant, and we think that that one condition there is the one that has kept us and others from being able to get affordable homes in the area. And so our goal with Liberty Communities is to build quality homes at an affordable value that, you know, are on the trend that we see in Newton County. And right now, the records, you know, show that around 2,000 is about where our starter families are starting in that area. And we feel that the product that we have, that we've proposed this evening as well, starts at the 2,000, but, you know, goes up from there, would really be a quality asset to the neighborhood and would be a higher value than what is already in the area. So our goal is to have that modification done so we can get this into the tax base and have homeowners and no longer an eyesore in the community.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? If you would, match, push star six and unmute your phone, please. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose. We want to open it up for those that want to oppose. You also have 10 minutes tonight. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. If you would want to make comments, match star six and unmute your phone, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. We want to go over to Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Am I allowed to ask a question here, or do I have to wait till we reach the?
Yeah, you are. Go ahead.
I'd like to ask Judy, Judy, what, so in that area, and you may or may not know this, in that area, how does 2,000, 2,000 square feet fit into other similarly designed little neighborhoods, loop-type neighborhoods?
This particular subdivision, and just also to go back to make sure that, because there was a question, and I've looked it up on Q Public, and I can certainly share that screen. District Two does have the north side of Richard Chapel's Road, and it also has the area in which Denny Dobbs Park lies, but as soon as you get east of the Denny Dobbs Park and the south side of Richard Chapel, it does start back in District One. There is a subdivision that adjoins this particular subdivision that is similar in landmass and so forth. It is the Park Place subdivision, and clicking on several of the parcels in there, the size of the homes there seem to be somewhere around 1,400 square feet to maybe 1,500 or so. So those developments seem to have been constructed prior to the ordinance amendment, where it would have required at least 1,800 heated square feet. If I go over to Ville Road, which is also another development there, and I randomly just clicked on one, and it comes back with 1,311 heated square feet, so I would, I would believe that a 2,000-square-foot house, which certainly exceeds the minimum requirement of the zoning ordinance, would certainly not detract from any of the other homes and potentially maybe add value.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And one other, for the builder, so 2,000, what you're requesting is 2,000, a minimum of 2,000 heated square feet. So what, and how many lots were there?
There's a total of 18 lots.
Okay. 18 lots, and I know this, I can't hold you to this, but if you had to guess, how many would be at that minimum of 2,000 out of that 18?
I would, I would say if we had to look at it, I would say maybe a third. So you're looking at less than, less than five of those would probably be there at the lowest, but like I said, if we're at that 2,000, even our lowest house that we have in there in square footage exceeds that by just a mark in the 2,000, but the 2,000 range would allow us to build a four-bedroom house that would really be able to attract homeowners in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Still seek a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve modification of zoning conditions, case number MOD 2000001.
Thank you, sir.
Second by District Two.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner Shaw, go ahead.
Judy, there are no other zoning requirement, I mean, design or standards that are in that area, is that correct?
In other neighborhoods in that area?
Right. For the zoning, there are no other design or building standards for the, for that particular zoning in that area?
No, ma'am, other than the conditions that were imposed on, for this, in this particular case, going back and researching the rezoning from 2005, I believe because the request was to go to the R1 instead of one of the other zoning districts, that perhaps some of the offerings from the applicant were these conditions that were imposed upon them by the Board of Commissioners in order to get the zoning district in which they sought.
And then for the applicant, is, I'm not really familiar with Liberty Communities, or do you have other properties in the area?
Yes, we build in Newton County quite often. We have Mills Co., Riverwalk Farms.
Okay, so Riverwalk is a Liberty.
We build in, we build in a lot of those communities as well.
Okay. I'm familiar with Liberty, with Riverwalk.
Ms. Chairman, I got a question. Go ahead, sir.
A developer, do you have protective cabinet on this subdivision?
Yes, there will be an HOA.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Grant, I was looking at the photos of the sample house plans, and I wanted to know, because I've noticed that sometimes some developers, they will come in and make all the homes look exactly alike, so it doesn't really look like a community. So is your projected plan to make every single home different out of those, what was it, 18 lots, so that the homes look unique and different, so it looks like a community versus all of the homes looking exactly alike, looking exactly the same, exact color, exact brick? You know, do you plan to make each individual home look like an individual home, so it looks like a complete community?
Great question. Yes, we offer our homeowner several different packages that they can choose from. We limit those packages to a few packages so that they can make sure that it's aesthetically pleasing to everybody, you don't have one that stands out from the other. But altogether, there are several packages that they can choose from, and we try not to put those side by side, especially house plans side by side, unless there's some kind of constraint based off of the lot size. But here, our lot size is very large, all the products would fit on each of the lots, so there really wouldn't be an issue for that. Plus, the size of home versus the size of lot, there would also be a lot of trees that would be able to be left, so some of those would be partially wooded as well, which would provide some screening between houses and things like that. Based off of the topo, some of those areas will be available to do that, some of them won't, but the idea is to leave as many of our trees as possible in there, too.
Okay, great. And then also, will there be more than one entrance and exit? Will it just be one entrance and one exit?
Just the one. There's one entrance coming in, and that's it.
Okay. That was all the questions that I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor?
That's an I from District One.
I from District Two.
I from District Three.
I for District Four.
I from District Five.
Thank you. Pass the five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the time that you took, and Judy, thank you for getting the package together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Judy, item number 17.
Yes, sir. Our next item is, well, just one moment, I apologize. Our next item is a, another rezoning request, oh, my stars, oh, rezoning request, this is REZ 20-000005. This property is located at 5219 Highway 20, and it is in District Two. The existing zoning on the property is R2, single-family residential, and the request is to go to CH, Highway Commercial. The request is to rezone the three-acre parcel in order to develop the property to establish a landscaping business. The subject property has a total of three acres and is located on the west side of Georgia Highway 20. The applicant has provided a site plan, a proposed layout and use for the property. The property is currently zoned R2, and the applicant is proposing to go to CH, Highway Commercial. The properties located to the north and south are currently zoned CN, Neighborhood Commercial, with a mix of both commercial and residential properties adjacent across Highway 20. The proposed zoning, if approved, will be subject to all conditions of zoning. Here is a location of the property. You will see across from here, this is just north of the intersection of Brown Bridge Road, Highway 20 and 212, where you see it here, it's kind of, and I apologize, my screen, I can't see real well, but it's kind of across from where the Auto Zone is located. As you can see by the different coloring on the zoning map here, everything that is a orange or a yellow color is the single-family residential, but the light pinks are CN, which is Neighborhood Commercial, and then your little darker red is going to be Highway Commercial. And then you also have, you can see the back of Snapping Shoals Utility there, which is CG, and that is General Commercial. So there are other zonings in the properties to support this. Staff would like to point out that because this property adjoins two other residentially zoned properties, that on the east side of the property where it adjoins the Neighborhood Commercial, there would be no buffer requirement, but on the backside of the property where it adjoins other residential properties, there would be a buffer requirement of which the applicant has worked into their site plan. Again, this is zoned MX. You can kind of see now here where the Kroger and all the other businesses are there. There's the Dollar General in the area, like I said, in Auto Zone. There are several, several older homes in the area that have previously been approved for commercial uses and have not redeveloped. In this case, there was an old home on the property, and the applicant has already received a demolition permit and has removed the older dilapidated home. Again, this is a survey plot of the property, and although this is very, very light, and I apologize that you can't see it that well, you can note that here is a property line, and then they have shown their required buffer from the residential zoning, and then as closer to Highway 20, you see that they have opened it up because they're not required to have a buffer there. The site plan analysis, based on the plan and conceptual building plan submitted on March 10th, 2020 by the applicant to the Development Services Department, staff offers the following considerations. The applicant has submitted a site plan that shows a proposed building located in the middle portion of the property. They are proposing to use the structure for retail sales of landscaping materials, with the materials being stored on the rear of the property and customer parking being located behind the building. The applicant has indicated a willingness to meet any transitional buffer requirements that is needed for the residentially adjacent properties. Conclusion, the proposed zoning and use is consistent with the policies and intent of the future land use and the comprehensive plan with approved zonings in the area. Given the land use and zoning designations of the surrounding properties, there is justification for approval. Recommended conditions, if this petition is approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved CH, Highway Commercial, conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. Number one, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the property as follows. A, landscaping company only. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. All landscape plans to be approved by the Department of Development Services. B, provide satisfactory ingress and egress for the site from Highway twenty to be approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. And C, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services before any issuance, and I can't see the bottom, just one moment, um, any issuance before any construction or development on the property. Uh, this was heard by the Planning Commission at the April twenty eighth, twenty twenty um, meeting, and it was recommended with staff's conditions unanimously. I did see the applicant, Ms. Lopez, on the call. And there was no one at the Planning Commission meeting that had any comments in opposition to actually any of the cases, including this one.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor of this tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. Um, if you will, please state your name, your address for the record, please, to applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. If you will, push star six and you'll be able to unmute your phone. Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone want to speak in favor tonight? If you would, uh, push star six and unmute your phone.
Chairman, I do see where she is logged in, but I don't see a microphone option. Ms. Lopez?
If you will, miss, um, if you will, push star six and unmute your phone, please. Want to speak in favor tonight? Want to speak in favor tonight? I'm gonna go one more round.
She has sent a, Chairman, this is Judy, I apologize. She has sent a text that she's here, but for some reason, um, we can't hear her.
If you would, press star six and unmute your phone. Uh, I'm not able to see what's going on on her end. Um.
I wonder.
Chairman, if I may. Chairman, Brian, if I may, um, she may be on her computer and will have to connect audio. Um, she can do that either through her phone. It'll give her instructions and a phone number, uh, if her, if her computer does not have audio capabilities.
She did send a message.
If you connect audio. Go on, Judy.
Yes, I'm sorry, Brian. She did send a message that she was going to call back in um, and try to reestablish at eight seventeen. She sent that message.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it sounds like what she did is she logged in, but she didn't connect to the audio when she initially logged in. So she wasn't able, when she took herself off of mute, she wasn't able to actually, we couldn't hear her because she didn't connect to the audio portion of the Zoom call.
Thank you. If anyone else want to speak in favor tonight?
She just said she's not able to connect to the audio on her computer.
Chairman, if I may, while she's perhaps trying to call in, do you want to maybe move on to the next zoning case?
Um, I mean, I guess, I guess we can, um.
We may need a motion to do that.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try to give her another opportunity. I mean, because we, we are.
Chairman, bang.
I'll go ahead.
Hey, there, it's Megan. Can you hear me? Sorry, I didn't mean to step on your words. Um, what we can do is we can suspend, we should have a motion to suspend until after X. So we could say after review of ordinance zero five one nine two O D regarding the noise ordinance.
Okay.
But we will need a, a motion on that one.
Commissioner Mason?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion, um, per our county attorney.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please?
Second from District Two.
Thank you. Um, it's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion?
So we're suspending REZ two zero 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 five? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
That's a nine from District One.
I from District Two.
I from District Three.
I from District Four.
I from District Five.
Thank you, sir. It's been, it's been, um, it, that passed us five to zero. We will, uh, pick that back up when she calls in.
Hello? Hi, can you all hear me?
Um, we can. Um, I guess we're gonna pick it back up now.
Sorry about that. For the reason I was having, I was having trouble trying to get, connect to, uh, my audio in the computer.
Okay, so Ms. Judy has went over all, all the detail, and we're gonna open it back up now for um, our public, our public hearing. Uh, so we're gonna allow ten minutes for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor of, of this ordinance. I mean, I'm sorry, that is, uh, um, rezoned, I apologize. Uh, this rezoned, uh, those who want to speak in favor, Ms. Lopez.
Yes, so my name is Stephanie Lopez, and my address is fifty-four ninety-six Highway two twelve in Duffin Covington. Like Judy mentioned, um, thank you so much, Judy, for all your help with this. I do like to, I would like to establish a small landscape business where I can sell pine straw, mulch, gravel, and uh, other landscape material like plants. Uh, we would also have a small office, um, probably twelve by thirty-six. Um, um, in, in the center, well, in the center of the, of the lot, uh, where we could have also parking behind the office. Um, but yeah, it would just be a small landscape business and, um, and we would be complying with all the regulations that, um, that we need to be compliant for, uh, in order to get the approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anyone else want to speak in favor of this tonight? If you would, push star six and unmute your phone. Anyone else want to speak in favor? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. Uh, if you would, uh, press star six and unmute your phone, and you can begin at this time, please. Anyone else want to oppose? Anyone that wants to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we approve zoning REZ two zero dash zero 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 five with the recommended approval of the staff's conditions.
Second from District One.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I can.
Ken, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Commissioner Mason, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Ms. Lopez, um, for your willingness to want to provide, or put this in Newton County. Um, I think this is a great location, uh, for this particular type of business. Um, I am aware that a lot of citizens in District Two thoroughly, uh, take pride in beautifying their homes. And so I think this will be, uh, a great opportunity for them to be able to get the mulch and the straw and the flowers and things like that from a nearby facility, um, a nearby business. Um, so I think this will be a great place. And then, of course, in that corridor area, uh, where we're looking to put this particular business, uh, I think it'll be great because there's a lot of other commercial businesses there as well, so.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's a question for Judy and maybe Megan. Uh, do you see this as a possibility of a spot zoning, since you've got the Neighborhood Commercial on both sides? And then you're going with a Highway Commercial use in the middle of that?
Um, no, sir, because there are other Highway Commercial zonings in the area that would support this. I would further go to say that this entire area is transitioning and is in some uh, great need of redevelopment and, um, the uses on Highway, the zoning district for CH Highway Commercial is respondent to the fact that this lies on Highway twenty and it supports a lot of other zonings. I can go further out in Q Public if y'all would like to see on the zoning, uh, map. But this is a snapshot of just these particular handful of properties, four or five properties. But when you do a little broader stroke, you will see many Highway Commercial and many general commercial zoning districts in that area.
Well, I think, I think what's gonna happen, this is gonna be the catalyst for everybody that has the Neighborhood Commercial zone to ask for a rezoning, a Highway Commercial. And that's fine, if that's gonna be suitable for the neighborhood, it's just need, we need to be aware that it's about six, uh, lots in there that's probably gonna ask for rezoning, and that whole area's gonna change with a little more high-density commercial use.
If I may make one other comment, um, pursuant to the conditions of zoning that we, uh, imposed and the applicant has agreed to, um, that we are restricting the use on this property to a landscape business only. So it would not open up the door for other uses that are allowed in the Highway Commercial zoning district unless someone came back in front of this board and either rezoned the property again or asked to modify the conditions imposed on this rezon.
Okay, all right. Megan, are you okay that it's not a spot zoning?
Can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I, um, have already spoken with Judy about this. It sounds to me like she's done a good job of incorporating everything we need to hopefully avoid any claims of a spot zoning.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're so welcome.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I did, I did have one last question, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, Judy, I didn't remember saying, um, is there where there, where it connect, where this, um, property connects to the residential, is there any fencing that has been proposed for just that residential area where that buffer is gonna be?
Um, they actually have a very, um, heavily wooded lot right now. And they are proposing a fifty-five foot buffer from the adjoining residentially zoned properties. If the existing tree line exists, they can use that as their, obviously their planted buffer. Um, I did not see a proposal for fencing, but I do understand the desire to potentially look at incorporating another condition that may restrict the type of fencing that could, um, be erected. Is that something you're wanting to consider?
Um, if the trees buffer it enough, that might be good, but it might be a great idea to go back and revisit that just to make sure that we have enough buffer there, uh, and if we do need fencing, possibly see if we can get that incorporated as well, if possible, if needed.
Would you be willing to entertain a condition D? That would be condition two D to read as follows. That the landscape buffer or the existing transitional buffer um, shall remain, um, in effect up to the residentially zoned properties. And any fencing would be on the interior side of the, um, property. And it, what that would mean is that you would have to keep that existing tree line. And if you desired to put a fence up, it would not be on the property line. It would be instead at that fifty-five foot buffer.
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Ms. Lopez, do you understand and agree to that?
Um, yes, Judy, actually, we, we wanted to go ahead and put a privacy fence all over the property.
And was your proposal, and I apologize, Chairman, if I'm out of order, I'm just trying to work the potential condition. Ms. Lopez, was yours to put the fence within that fifty-five or on the property line?
So it was gonna, so there's gonna be a privacy fence all over the property line. And then I drew in the fifty-five, uh, buffer line because that's where I knew that I could actually, um, put in, basically in the back of the property where I wanna have my plants and trees.
So are you proposing a, a privacy, six-foot privacy perimeter fence that would be a wooden fence or some type of material that would appear wooden?
It would be a, it would be a, what do you call the, the, um, it would be the chain link fence with the, with the privacy net, you know, the net that goes, that goes on top of the chain. So that way people, like, I know there, I know there were some complaints for the residents that they didn't want to see inside, so it'd be all private.
Commissioner Mason?
Yes, I'm familiar with that, and I'm fine with that as well.
Um, I, I would point out one thing, if we allowed the chain link fence on the perimeter of the property, um, I think we should add a condition that any type of netting must be, um, um, well-maintained, because a lot of times the wind will blow that type of netting and you're going to end up with it looking, um, stripped and, uh, dangling.
Hmm, okay.
Right, I agree, because I have seen where that can kind of get worn easily. So I think that would be great to have that condition there as well. And I, if I'm hearing it correctly, it's just gonna be that back part that has the, um.
That is close to the residential property.
Yes, just that backside, not a fence on the front part or on the front side, just that back part that connects to residential.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so you want to make, you want to make that, you want to add that into your motion, uh, Commissioner Mason?
Yes, would it still be just with the approval of the staff conditions, since we've added that in?
When I add, uh, condition D, uh, you can just burglar say, add commission, uh, um, condition D.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve REZ twenty dash zero 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 five with the approval of staff conditions with, um, section D included.
Second from District Two.
District One.
District.
Don't feel bad, Stan, I've done it too. I said District Three, I'm like, I'm District Two.
Thank you, it's been, it's been, we're gonna do that over. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
So I need to understand the fencing. So Judy, the fencing is a chain link fence with the slats in there or the, I don't understand the netting.
This is almost like a material that's like a roll of fabric, I suppose, that you will see that people will attach to the fencing. This is not the slats that would go in and out of the chain link fence. This would be something that would actually be like a rolled fa- fabric. And they would be able to adhere it to the fence. And again, sometimes because of how you attach it, because it's just going to be attached periodically on the fence, not into any, every rung. You do have where the wind can rip and tear it, which was why if this was going to be what our motion was, we would want to make sure that that fencing, that material stays well-maintained.
And, but it does provide privacy then.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. It would be like a green netting. I don't know if you're familiar on Washington Street where OMR and some of the other salvage yards are. Some of them use that. We've had a couple of auto businesses that use that to, as a privacy screening as well.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, thank you. Call them, call them for the vote, call them for the vote. All in favor?
Aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye from District Three.
Aye from District Four.
Aye from District Five.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Lopez. Pass five to zero, thank you so much. Ms. Judy, item number 18.
Yes, sir. The next section of our zoning this evening is going to go into proposed ordinance amendments. These are ordinance amendments that we, staff has been working on for quite some time. This also is part of our strategic plan to help clean up and make our regulations where they are development-friendly, but also holds the development to a standard. So this is also part of Strategy C, creating a framework for economic development. The proposed amendment, the first amendment before you this evening is the UDO 19-001. This is a proposed amendment to the Newton County zoning ordinance, the Newton County Development Regulations, and the Newton County Water Resource Management Ordinance. Currently, Newton County has three independent ordinances that regulate land use development and protection of our resources. This request is to combine the three standalone ordinances into one unified development ordinance to better facilitate the regulations to prevent further conflict between regulations and to make the document more user-friendly for economic development. Again, this is the first of several upcoming meetings that will further review and reduce the overall mass of the regulations and is in line with our strategic plan, Strategy C, creating the framework for economic development. This is the, the ordinance that you were sent that is over 900 pages right now. And again, we will be reducing those, but we have found such as one of the further amendments that we will be discussing under a different ordinance request is we've had conflicting language in our fence regulations where the development regulations called and allowed for one height and our zoning regulations called and allowed for a different height. So that is something that is actually going to be cleaned up this evening, we hope. And those are the type things that we're looking to do in the future once we have merged these documents together. So the first request in front of you tonight is for the ordinance And that is, this request right here is to combine all three of those regulations into one unified document.
Thank you. We're gonna open it up now for our public hearing. I'm gonna open it up for those that wanna speak in favor tonight. You have 10 minutes to do so. If you would, state your name and your address for the record, please. Those that wanna speak in favor. If you would, if your, if your phone is muted, please press star six and unmute your phone. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. You may go do so now. Though, anyone wanna speak in favor tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I will also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose. If you would, please press star six and unmute your phone. And you may begin at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I seek a motion, please, guys.
Mr. Chair, this is District Three. I move for approval of Unified, or UDO 19-001.
Second from District One.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Chairman Banks.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for Megan, please. On the agenda, it only has 00000. It does not have 01. Do we need to correct that during the meeting or is that fine? I'm just not sure.
Mine has 00000.
As does mine, Chairman Banks. That's what I was about to indicate. So if we could just restate the motion with the correct number, the 000 numbers without that one.
Okay, so the one that is, that's on our screen is the incorrect number. And the one that's in our book is the correct number.
No, ma'am, it was advertised. My apology, Megan. It was advertised with the short number that appears on your screen. I think when staff added this to our packets, we are so used to putting all of those preceding zeros that it ended up coming out like that on your agenda. But the actual ordinance that was advertised is the one, the short number that appears on the screen as what Commissioner Schultz actually stated in her motion.
Okay, guys, if you would.
So we have the right number currently on that motion? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. As far as what we legally advertised for, for it to be, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so our number then in our book is the one that's incorrect, not the one on the slides that you have presented.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to make sure that I had the right lay of the land.
Thank you. Any, any more, any more discussion? Any more discussion? Guys, please change. Please make sure your number in your packet reflect the number that's on the screen. UD 019-001. UD 0-1, I'm sorry, UD 019-001. All in favor?
From District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye, District Three.
Aye, District Four.
Aye, District Five.
Thank you, it passes five to zero. Ms. Judy, item number 19.
Yes, sir. The next request before you is the Amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance titled Chapter Three, Newton County Water Resource Management Ordinance. This is a request. On December 4th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners amended Chapter 35 of Division Two of the Code of Ordinances entitled "The Newton County Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinances of Newton County to Update to State and Federal Changes." That particular ordinance, while it is found in our large Code of Ordinances, is also found within our Newton County Water Resource Management Ordinance. But it was not advertised or incorporated into the Water Resource Management at that time. This amendment is to repeal and replace the old language found in the Water Resource Management Ordinance, Article Seven, Division 2700, with the formerly adopted language that reflects the updates for any state and federal changes. I would also like to mention that each of these amendments have been posted on the county's website since the last meeting where they were asked to be tabled from, as well as we have re-advertised. These were heard by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval. I had not stated that before. Neither have I received any phone calls or inquiries in regards to these amendments during the time they have been posted on the website.
Thank you. We're gonna open it up for our public hearing now. Guys, wanna act also, if you're, if you're not speaking, please mute your phone. I'm getting a lot of background noise. We're gonna open up a public, a public hearing. We're gonna allow those that wanna speak in favor tonight. You got 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Those that wanna speak in favor tonight. Those that wanna speak in favor tonight. If you wanna speak in favor tonight, please press star six and unmute your phone. Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also wanna allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may do so now. Please state your name and your, your address, please, for the record. If you, if your phone is muted, please press star six and unmute your phone. You may do so at this time. Anyone want to oppose? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, this is Nancy Schultz, District Three. I move for approval of 0-051920A.
Second, District Two.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor?
District One is an aye.
District Two is an aye.
District Three is an aye.
District Four is an aye.
District Five is an aye.
Thank you. It passes five to zero. Ms. Judy, please.
Sorry, Chairman, I had to unmute. Okay, our next amendment is the Amendment to the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance of Newton County, an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance entitled Chapter Two, Newton County Development Regulations, and Amendment to Chapter Three, Newton County Water Resource Management Ordinance. Again, this is one of those ordinances that appears in several places of our code. Patrick Dodson, who is one of our attorneys with Gerard and Davis, is on the phone this evening. And he did help with the drafting of this ordinance. But basically, the request for the floodplain management update is to amend the different sections to repeal and replace language that reflects more of the state and federal changes that we have not revisited in quite some time. So the specific sections would be Chapter 34 of Division Two of the Code of Ordinances entitled Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance of Newton County. Also to update by repealing and replacing in the Newton County Development Regulations, Division 1600, Flood Damage Prevention. And the amendment will also repeal and replace the Water Resource Management Ordinance, which is Article Six, Division 2600, with the same adopted language.
Chairman, Commissioners, can you hear me? This is Patrick Dodson. Judy, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can the Commissioners hear me?
I think so, Chair, okay.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. This is my first time with so many people on this Zoom call. I wanted to go over a couple of changes that I see are, may not be on the PDF document that you are looking at. Specifically, this would be the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance, page two of your document. The title there should just read Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. The next change would be on page four of the new ordinance. There were a couple of sections or additions that we had included at Section H, Penalties for Violations. It would be the second sentence regarding penalties. Those would be a fine of not more than $1,000 or imprisonment for not more than 60 days. That was not in the document that I believe that you're reviewing. The next change would be at page 10.
Okay, Mr. Dodson?
I'm shuffling through two different documents, I apologize. This would be at page 10 of your document, Section D. All recreational vehicles placed on sites must. And the remainder of that sentence will be stricken in, it will end must with a colon. Then, letter I be on site for fewer than 30 consecutive days. And that is correct. The next change would be at, pair at page 12 of the document. Give me one second, I'm navigating through the documents. This will be at number, item number three at the top of the page. The end of the sentence, "shall not result in more than three, a three-feet increase in flood levels during the occurrence of base flood discharge." And then, number four, we accepted wholesale the area in blue, which is new construction or substantial improvements of buildings. And the remainder of that sentence, we deemed was acceptable. These, I'm going over, were questions that were presented to us as to the legality or appropriateness of the language that was being used. The next and final addition is at page. I believe that may be all. Let me check, one more thing. At page 15, we made a minor change to the definition section, Article 6, for the purposes of Chapter 13, and we have stricken Division 660 for Article 6. That section, Division 660 or Article 6, is stricken in lieu of Chapter 34. Those would be the additional changes that I don't believe were reflected on the document.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Commissioners. You guys better get a motion. Are you getting any questions?
Public hearing.
Oh, damn. Wait a second. I'm sorry. I apologize. This is an opportunity. We're going to open up our public hearing. It has been a long night. This is an opportunity we open up our public to make comments. Guys, if you want to speak in favor of this, please state your name and your address for the record, please. If your phone is muted, please press star 6 to unmute your phone. You may do so at this time. You have 10 minutes. Those who want to speak in favor. Those who want to speak in favor. Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose. If you want to oppose tonight, please, ma'am, please, sir, unmute your phone, mash star 6, and please state your name and your address for the record, please, if you want to oppose tonight. Have 10 minutes to do so. Anyone want to oppose? Thank you. That closes our public hearing. Commissioners, now seek a motion, please. Somebody?
Mr. Chair, this is District 3. So, Patrick, the way that it's worded in our book, can I just make the motion based on the ordinance number as opposed to the changes that you made? So the motion would be move for approval of ordinance 051920B.
Can you just state, can you just state that number and include the changes by our county attorney, please?
And include the changes per county attorney.
Thank you. Can I get a second, please?
Second from District 1.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye from District 1.
Aye from District 2.
Aye, District 3.
Aye, District 4.
Aye, District 5.
Thank you. It passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Patrick. Ms. Judy?
Yes, sir. And we are almost to the end. The next request that I have before you this evening, I actually need to ask for a point of order here. We had multiple amendments, mostly cleanup amendments to both the zoning ordinance and the development regulations, and these were advertised. There is also a resolution that Mr. Sam Van Bokingberg was working on for us in reference to the timber ordinance. And again, this is simply to bring our ordinances in line with state and federal changes. So I do not see the resolution as a standalone agenda item. So as I discussed, this Chapter 39 amendments, again, these were advertised. I'm just not sure if we need to table the next resolution because it's not on the agenda, or if we're able to add it to the agenda and take care of that business this evening.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to that, the only time that we can amend an agenda this deep into the meeting is that we would have to have a showing that it would unduly prejudice, or that someone, that it's become an important item in the middle of the meeting. With this, this is an item I don't think that we could pass the smell test on, amending the agenda this late in the meeting. So I would recommend to the board that we either table this until the next meeting, or whenever Ms. Judy believes that she can get that resolution on here that Sam's preparing for her.
I think we can table it to the next meeting, guys. Can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I so apologize. It's not going to be that this amendment. This amendment is actually number C. It would be the next slide. I just wanted to ask for a point of order before I went on because they are kind of linked together. But this one can be a standalone ordinance amendment that is in front of you right now. It will be the next item that would need to be tabled until the next VOC meeting.
Is that, okay. Is that, is that number, is that item number 22?
It's not on there as an item. So this one here is on there as ordinance 0-051920C.
Okay.
This one, that is the slide that I'm about to explain. I just needed to know before I went too far into it.
Okay.
Amendment to Chapter 39, Division 2 of the Code of Ordinances and the Unified Development Ordinance titled Chapter 2 Newton County Development Regulations. This amendment is to repeal and replace discrepancies in language as well as updates to the recent state and federal changes as applicable. Section 1410-010 Minor Residential Subdivision Classifications, Subsections B, F, and G, Section 1460-020 of the Lighting Standards to allow for LED lighting and to regulate the height of mounting fixtures, and Division 1615, former Section 615 of the 2003 Newton County Development Regulations, to address the height of fencing, which formerly conflicted with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. And this is how we're going to open up for a public hearing. Those who want to speak in favor tonight, you may do so at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. If your phone is on mute, please press star 6. You have 10 minutes to do so. You may begin now. Anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You also have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Please press star 6 to unmute your phone, and you may begin now. Anyone wishes to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, this is District 3. I move for approval of ordinance 051920C.
Thank you.
Second by District 1.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor?
From District 1.
Aye from District 2.
Aye, District 3.
Aye, District 4.
Aye, District 5.
Thank you. It passes 5 to 0. Thank you so much. Ms. Judy?
Yes, sir. Chairman, this is the resolution in which we were just speaking. So staff requests that the Board of Commissioners table the Timber Harvest Resolution until the next Board of Commissioners meeting.
It's not on our agenda.
Correct.
It's not on our agenda.
So do we just ignore that it was here?
I mean, it's to table it. We're going to have to put it on our agenda.
Okay, okay. We're good. Moving on.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, it's actually on the revised agenda. So it's number 21 on the actual revised agenda. So what is on the agenda for tonight?
Not on my agenda.
Because we...
Chairman.
Original agenda, and then Ms. Jackie sent out a revised agenda, and it's on that one.
It's not on my agenda, but I have Ms. Jackie's book, and it gets in her book.
It's not on my agenda. It's, Commissioner, Commissioner Edwards is on your agenda.
No, it's not.
Commissioner Schultz is on your agenda.
No, it's not.
Commissioner Henderson is on your agenda.
Yes, it is.
Commissioner Cowan is on your agenda.
No.
So it's not on, it's, it's not on three agendas. We're gonna, we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on and go down to SP 22.
Yes, sir. Here's the final item this evening, is an ordinance amending the Newton County Noise Ordinance, otherwise known as Newton County Ordinance, Chapter 14, to reorganize and update the ordinance to establish variance procedures and requirements, and to modify and clarify regulations related to noise reduction, and to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. The purpose of this ordinance amendment will be to update the language and allow for a variance process. There will be an additional amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to include the process into the powers, to include the process into the power of the Board of Zoning Appeals. This has not been advertised at this time, therefore, it will come back to you in front of the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. But tonight, we're asking just to revise Chapter 14 of the Newton County Code of Ordinances entitled the Noise Ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am. At this time, we're going to open it up for those that want to speak in favor of this tonight. You have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. If your phone is on mute, please press star 6 to unmute your phone. You may begin. Anyone want to speak in favor? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. If your phone is muted, please press star 6 and unmute your phone. You may begin. Anyone want to oppose? Anyone want to oppose? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is also closed. Commissioners, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, this is District 3. I move for approval of ordinance 051920D, the Noise Ordinance Amendment to repeal and replace.
Second from District 1.
Motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion?
I have one quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Would it be something that that will tell us, so we'll know how you measure the noise?
Ms. Judy, would there be anything that will read the decimals of the noise that are being made?
No, sir. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Dodson, again, was the attorney that helped to create this ordinance for us. Basically, what we did is we followed a model ordinance. We do not currently have the tools, as we learned when there was a proposal for the go-kart facility. We do not currently have any tools in Newton County that could measure the sound of noise. What we have done is we have set parameters as to distance requirements and other, other items that kind of give parameters for noise. Patrick, I apologize, but I may need you to help me out here a little bit.
This is Patrick. We, as Judy said, we looked at a number of different ordinances around the Atlanta metro area. For every county or municipality that had actual decibel requirements for violations of the, of the noise regulation ordinance, there was a county that didn't have a specific decibel level. There were counties that, that had a lot of specificity with regards to distances from residential areas, distances in different zoning districts, which we felt get very convoluted and very complex and make it very difficult to enforce, especially considering that we don't have the capability to even measure the decibel levels. The, the prohibited noise per the ordinance, we didn't even, we didn't even amend that aspect. It's just more of a reasonable person standpoint with a 75-foot distance. Now, we can all kind of disagree, or maybe people have different tolerances, but most of the ordinances use a reasonable person standard, and there are time limitations as well, 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. And, and there are different distinctions regarding different types of noises, blowers, motors, horns, and the like. Construction, obviously, is a big one. But this ordinance, really, this change was kind of driven by economic development and the necessity to really give businesses an opportunity to seek a variance for, under this ordinance, so that they could operate 24 hours a day.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Is there Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? All in, all in favor?
Aye from District 1.
Aye from District 2.
Aye from District 3.
Aye from District 4.
Aye from District 5.
Thank you. It passes 5 to 0. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is Public Works. It's requesting that the Board authorize the Chairman to execute the contract for acquisition of right-of-way for the bridge replacement project, Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may know, we are in the middle of a project, two bridge projects on, pardon me, on Brown Bridge Road. One bridge being over the Yellow River, the other, the second bridge being over the Snapping Shoals Creek. Both of these projects are, are projects that we're receiving state aid from GDOT on. And whenever we have, we do. from GDOT on. And whenever we have, we do a state aid project like this, typically the money that we receive through the state is federal money and it does require that we hire a company to do the right-of-way acquisition for us. I don't see Mr. Clegg's phone number on here. I don't, I'm not sure. Let me see if Chester
I'm here, Lloyd.
Are you thinking? Good. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't see your number on there. If you would, Chester Clegg is our transportation engineer. Chester, maybe if you would go into a little more detail then with the, with the board on the, on the project and the need for the contract between us and GDOT.
Well, thank you, Lloyd. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the project, that bridge replacement project, Snapping Shoals on Brown Bridge Road is moving ahead. The, the project's 80% funded by FHWA funds and 20% by the county. However, with the right-of-way acquisition, it's 100% funded by FHWA through GDOT. So that's good news. As you probably recall, the, the board approved the contract to start the preliminary engineering phase for the project a couple of years ago called the, the Project Framework Agreement. And so we are moving now to the next phase. Engineering is probably 90% complete. And the, the county, since we're responsible, the, the local sponsor is responsible for acquiring the right-of-way for this project, we, we are required to sign a contract with GDOT concerning the right-of-way acquisition, and then we're responsible for acquiring the right-of-way. So, per the contract. So that's what this is. And then once the right-of-way is acquired, we will, the board will have to approve another contract for construction. So three main contracts in, in these federally funded projects. So, and this particular contract will not exceed $360,000 for a right-of-way acquisition. And like, as I said, it's 100% funded by GDOT.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, I seek a motion.
Mr. Chair, this is District Two Commissioner.
Go ahead, sir.
I seek a motion that we approve Public Works requesting board to authorize the chairman to execute, execute the contract for acquisition of the right-of-way for the bridge replacement project at Brown Bridge Road at Snapping Shoals Creek, not exceeding the cost of 360,000.
Second, District Three.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Schultz. End of discussion. All in favor?
I from District One.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Two.
Thank you, sir.
I District Three.
Thank you, ma'am.
I District Four.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Five.
Thank you, sir. It passes five to zero. Item 12, County Attorney Discussion Consideration of Influential Oh, wow. Epidemic Employment Policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight, you all have an influenza pandemic employment policy. Of course, this is a new policy for us because our world has changed quite a bit. Whereas two, three months ago, we possibly would not have even thought about drafting such a policy. I trust that you all have the policy in your packets. I do want to highlight the, the main tone of the policy for you all. First of all, it does apply to all employees. I have some questions about if this would apply to our elected officials. You all are not employees, but nonetheless, I would strongly encourage you to follow these same safety measures that are contained in the policy. The goal of the policy, when we sat down and put pen to paper, was to maintain a safe and healthy work environment, but also keeping business going in, in the county. The policy does spell out specifically what are contagious symptoms and/or conditions. We've put a lot of effort there, so we won't have any gray area, or at least limited gray area, in the policy. I do think it provides clarity to employees and supervisors. We've had many calls from your department heads and others asking these questions, so it, it will provide clarity across the board. This has been provided to Ms. Schumaker, the HR Director, and she will implement the policy. It does summarize workplace requirements. For example, you will not return to work and infect others if you do have those contagious symptoms that we spoke about earlier. We are going to pay for employees who may be absent due to a contagious symptoms via their accrued leave. If they have accrued leave, they will utilize that. And I see it as something that goes hand in hand there. We do have specific return-to-work requirements and a compliance section to ensure that these are policies that are followed by our employees and our supervisors. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Megan. Commissioner Edwards, you have anything?
I do not. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mason, you have anything?
No, sir, I don't.
Thank you. Commissioner Schultz, have anything?
Yes, sir. So I, I read this policy pretty, pretty thoroughly and I have some concerns about the current situation with the COVID-19, where you have employees who might possibly be a positive COVID and how, I, I don't think that this is addressed in this policy, what the response is for that positive COVID, how it would be handled within, with the other employees. I know that's a unique situation, but we, you know, this is the first pandemic we've really dealt with in this, in this kind of a situation, but I don't think it will be the last. So I do think that we need some clarity on what happens when we have someone who's been diagnosed positively and how that affects the other employees and what, whether they need to stay isolated. And we don't really address that at all in this policy.
If I may respond, Chairman Bane. We purposely in this, in this particular policy did not make it simply COVID-19. The scope of the assignment was to provide a framework for, as you indicated, any other pandemics that we may encounter. But it also works for the influenza or flu as well. If you can tell me an area within that you don't feel that it provides adequate information, I'll be happy to, of course, revise and bring it back to you at the next meeting.
I just think that what's important is that it doesn't really address what, because if, if you have, let's just say that it's not COVID-19, but it's another pandemic where you have a positive case, and, and I don't think it addresses what's to do to protect the other employees that have, might have had exposure. So I, I just think that we've got to have a section in there about isolating and quarantining. And it doesn't necessarily have to reference COVID-19, but there needs to be a section about isolation and quarantine.
I will be happy to make, I again would ask, because I'm looking at it quite close, Commissioner Schultz. And we have many of those things recorded under workplace requirements and discussion of when someone has to stay home. We could, of course, plug in a section, maybe F, that just indicates if an employee has a contagious illness, they will remain home. We do say that they have to have a healthcare provider certification to come back to work. As far as safety of other employees, we, we could put a very basic indicator that the workplace will be cleaned, especially since we are making those changes that Mr. Kerr mentioned, getting additional cleaners that would work for us. So we could indicate the county has an obligation to maintain an environment that's free of the virus as far as we personally can go. But if you, even if it's offline, if you want to look and give me some ideas of where you'd like to see those changes, I'll be happy to make them.
Well, I think there needs to be a section F that, that, and, you know, we can reach out to some other counties, but I think there needs to be a section F that refers to if you have an individual that has a communicable disease that is something that requires that other employees are isolated for a, for a specific period of time. You know, I think we can make it general enough, but it, but it just doesn't give any direction to department heads at this point about what to do if there is someone who has a communicable disease that is highly transmittable.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let me ask a quick question. Guys, would, would you don't think we could approve this tonight and just amend the policy at, as in the next board meeting?
I would just direct staff to, or Megan to come back. I I, I think that we need to have some direction. I think that the policy is fine except for that one missing portion. So perhaps we can amend, we can adopt it and ask Megan to come back with some additional amendments to it.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Kerr.
I think that's a great idea. That will give us the opportunity to have something just as a stopgap until our next meeting, but I will definitely get to work on that.
My concern on anything related to this, and I know, obviously, Megan, you've given this a lot of due consideration because your specialty is employment law. But I'm a little concerned because are we not straddling a fine line here with HIPAA regulations and all? And, you know, I don't know that we can capture this in the ordinance, but we're going to have to have some significant training on how we handle the employees because it's very easy, it will be very easy. People will figure it out using reason and deduction on who the culprit is. And I would think that, you know, if, if everybody has to quarantine for some reason, it, it won't take people very long to figure out who it is. And we would be creating a very could be creating a very hostile environment. So, I mean, I think as far as having a policy, I think we need to, to have something in place, definitely. I mean, that's part of what we're working on with getting everybody back to work is, when we do come back to work, what, what are we going to do? And what is the, what is the protocols? And obviously, we're going to want to follow what CDC and DPH and the fourth have in, in mind. But I think we're going to need to really spend some time with our supervisors on, you know, how do we, how do we figure out or how do we go about doing this without violating someone's privacy? So, you know, just that, I'm throwing that out there as food for thought. And I know when you and I will get together on this, I'm sure with Amanda, we'll have to come up with some way to handle the training in that as well.
So I would just say that we have some good resources. We have Dr. Arono, we have Piedmont Hospital. I would suggest we reach out to them and get some guidance from both of those entities because I know for a fact that both of them have had to deal with this and they all, and they have to respect HIPAA as well. I just, it's important to protect all of the employees and it's important to protect the privacy. And there's a way to do both.
Yeah. Well, I, you know, the last situation we had, I don't know how good of a job we did with protecting our employee names because it got out pretty fast. And I mean, it got out real fast. So I can, I can agree with Mr. Kerr. It, it got out of screaming fast. We definitely need training and, and definitely need training in that situation. So but Megan, do, is, do you think that we can get something approved tonight? Because I think we need something in, in place. And then at our next board meeting, we can build on, on the policy.
Absolutely. We can do that tonight. We were just indicating the motion is the motion is to approve as the agenda item states, because we simply need to get something in place. Then I will send Ms. Jackie a request to be on the next agenda with amendments that I come out of relating to exposures.
Mr. Kerr, would you, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the, with the policy. I mean, I think it's, it's a good policy. I don't have any problem with that at all. My concern mainly was with, you know, some kind of a follow-up with that we also need to understand. We've got to train our employees on this so that we don't put ourselves so that they're prepared to be able to handle the questions. Because you are right, in our last incident, it took probably about an hour for people to figure out.
Only, thank you with that, though.
No, that, no, that, I mean, as far as the policy goes, I mean, I, I think it, it, it's okay. It's, it's, it's fine. I mean, particularly because this will get us through, this is something that we need as a general policy. And it's not necessarily tailored towards just COVID-19, because there's going to be others, just as Commissioner Schultz said. You know, the next thing may be, who knows what it's going to be. But, but in terms of having something in place, I think this is, this is good.
Thank you.
Do we, did we make a motion already?
No, ma'am.
So do you want me to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
So I move for, oops, I lost the policy. I move for approval of the influenza pandemic employment policy and direct county attorney to come back with amendments to further add additional language by the next board meeting.
Second from District One.
It was motion by Commissioner Schultz and I'm going to get us into Commissioner Mason because Commissioner has got a bit on the night, so we'll get us to Commissioner Mason. Second by Commissioner Mason. Any more, any more discussion? Any more discussion? I was going to add also in this discussion that I had a long call today with, with DHP. And I think we need to make sure we get this on, on the, this policy in, in, in place. I really do. With that being said, all in favor?
I from District One.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Two.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Three.
Thank you, ma'am.
I from District Four.
Thank you, sir.
I from District Five.
Thank you, sir. It passes five to zero. Next, item number 13. I don't know who going to handle this one. Lloyd, is this you or Sam?
Sir, Mr. Chairman?
This is going to be Sam in Wilkenburg. There you go.
Thank you.
Neil, can you hear me?
I can.
All right. Good evening. So before I, I start, I just want to make sure that the agenda that you have is the most recent one. Does your item 13 end with, and purchasing policy and travel policies applicable to such staff?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Okay. So this single agenda item encompasses actually five documents. There's the IGA, two employment contracts that are not county employment contracts. They're IDA employee contracts that we are simply approving. And then the purchasing and travel policies that the IDA will be using. All these documents were approved last night by the IDA. And we do have a end of May deadline to get these approved by the county. So hopefully, these, these meet with your favor tonight. The reason being that June 1st, we need to onboard these employees for purposes of our health insurance policies so there's no gap in their coverage, although technically they will start their employment on July 1st. So I guess I will start by saying the IGA has been presented to you in sort of more abstract form a couple of times in the past, and this is sort of the final negotiated version. I want to point out that I want to point out that this IGA does commit the county to $350,000 financial support commitment. And otherwise, our role is to provide human resource services. We are not gonna be providing office space. The employees will be IDA employees, but we will be paying them and providing human resource backup to those employees. The IGA references to employment contracts. And those two contracts state that the employees will have to comply with the county's regular purchasing and travel policies unless you approve alternative policies. And that's what that purchasing and travel policies are. Those are sort of the IDA's preferred alternative policies. The travel policy is, is fairly similar to the county's. The purchasing policy is quite different. It's, it's pretty bare bones. But IDA staff have indicated that they need that flexibility and a lack of a, uh, overreaching complicated policy in order for them to do their jobs. So that's my summary. I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Start off, uh, in order. Commissioner, uh, Ed, would you have anything?
So the, the last time we talked about this particular subject was, seems like several weeks ago. And I thought the IDA was coming back to us with a Plan A and Plan B. What, what happened to that? I mean?
As far as, uh, um, who they're gonna report to or Plan A and Plan B?
Well, I guess.
I thought we told Commissioner Sims to come back with us, uh, the plan that, that they wanted to move forward with. I mean, Chairman Sims, I'm sorry.
No, I thought there was a Plan A and a Plan B. I, I, so this has got, this, this, this plan here has the economic development folks reporting to the IDA. Okay. Now, here's my problem with it is we have, on the IDA, there are City of Covington officials, both who are both, uh, both of those gentlemen are friends, and I trust both of them. But we don't know, they'll, they'll be on there forever. We don't know that they'll be there, how, how long they'll be on the IDA. So what we've essentially got is I, we've got economic development employees that are reporting to an entity in part that don't, no longer funds economic development, does not want to participate in economic development anymore. That's my problem with it. Uh, and I really, I really was counting on Plan A and B.
Let me, let me, let me make sure, let me make sure. Sam, you, you there, Sam?
Yes, sir.
Hey, can you address the, uh, Plan A and Plan B? Because I don't wanna, I wanna make sure I don't miss, uh, misspeak here.
Well, I, I guess I don't recall discussing a Plan A and Plan B in, in the VOC meeting, which was a couple of months ago. Mr. Edwards may be referring to a, a later conversation because I do remember when, when we had our conference call with the IDA staff, there was a, a Plan A for the IDA to be the employer and a Plan B for the, uh, the Chamber of Commerce to be the employer. But everyone on that call seemed to think that having, continuing the Chamber of Commerce as the employer was, was not realistic. Uh, and, and if I could just go a step further. Commissioner Edwards' concerns are, were discussed in our last VOC meeting. And to address those, uh, if you look at section 1.2 of the IGA, specifically 1.2A and B, the, the very first two, uh, job items that these employment or these economic development staff are going to set to work on are developing a economic development strategic plan that will be in consultation with the VOC and approved by the VOC. So presumably, the strategic plan that is approved will not be too city-centric.
So go, go ahead and finish, uh, Mr. Commissioner Edwards.
Well, I just, uh, I, I, I'm, I'm not in agreement with it. I'm sorry. Uh, I, I was, I really hope we'd see an option that had the, these economic development folks reporting to the county and reassigned to the economic development team, reporting directly to the VOC. I, I just don't, uh, I'm just not prepared to support this tonight. I'm just not. Sorry.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Mason.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Are we able to explain? And I don't know, Sam, if, if this is something that you can do, explain what the difference would be if ED reported directly to the board? And if they reported to IDA, what that difference would look like? Um, or would there be a difference at all? So that we can kind of get an understanding of what those two models can potentially look like?
Well, I, I guess if they reported to the board, they would be under a department, maybe a new, a new standalone department. They'd probably report to Lloyd. There would probably be less flexibility for them in terms of their employment perks. Um, I know that something like some of their, uh, the features of their employment contract give them, you know, time off that, that maybe they wouldn't otherwise get under standard county policies. And I guess to Commissioner Edwards' concern, we would have more of a direct say in how they spend their time. But I think for the most part, they would operate independently because that's kind of what their job requires them to do. So for the most part, their job wouldn't be that, that different depending on whether they were under us or under the IDA.
Okay, so that, so they would basically operate the same. They just will have more flexibility if they were under the IDA?
I think that's right.
Yeah, okay. Um, anything else, Commissioner?
No, so that was it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Sam.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I had lost internet connection for a brief moment, so I'm on my cell phone now. You know, I, I'm, I, I do remember at the work session that there were supposed to be, um, a Plan A and a Plan B that was supposed to be brought back to us. I'm assuming that there is no Plan B, that there's only Plan A. But one of the concerns that I have is that on this agenda item, there's supposed to be a purchasing policy. And I've received the, what I've received is a document that's an intergovernmental agreement and an employment agreement and a travel policy, but I have not received a purchasing policy. Was that sent out today?
Um, it should have been sent on Friday, um, or, or maybe Monday. But I can, I certainly can email it to you now. It should be part of your packet. If the travel policy came to you, the purchasing policy would have been with it.
Well, um, what, we received that today from Ms. Jackie. And there, there's no, I did not receive a purchasing policy in the documents she sent to me.
If I may interject, folks, I just reviewed it on my device, the full packet versus what you have. It appears that it was accidentally left out, Sam. It, it didn't make it onto the packet.
Well, I would be more than happy to email it if that would suffice.
Well, I'm just not sure that I have time to read that that quickly. I mean, unless it's a one-page document, I guess if it's a one-page document, I can read it while. Well, let me just ask a couple of questions of the documents that I did receive. And then you can send that one and then I'll come back to it. So I'm looking at the document that's labeled travel policy. And you said essentially that's the same as our, um, policy for the county. But I, I'm looking at lodging being allowed at 45 miles. And I know that, um, the county policy is 60 miles. So, uh, and also the business-related airfare of over $750 must be pre-approved by the executive director. Um, I believe our policy states that any, any travel has to be approved. So I just, I, I'm concerned that if we're, if we are truly turning, there, there are two schools of thought here. If we're truly turning this over to, uh, the IDA to manage everything, then I'm not really sure why we need to approve their travel policy. But if there's, if, you know, if we are, if we're going to approve their travel policy, then it seems to me that it needs to be consistent with our travel policy. So I, I guess, I, I feel like to a certain extent, we're kind of muddying the waters. So that's, you know, I just, I, I'm a little bit confused by that. And then there's a part in the IGA, which I do believe is something that is important. And that is, um, the, on page three of the IGA where it discusses, um, alcohol consumption. And it, if you turn to page three of the IGA, it says, however, economic development staff shall be permitted to consume reasonable amounts of alcohol when appropriate in business-related social settings. And the reasonable cost of such alcohol shall be, shall not be borne by the authority from funds provided by the county. So I'm assuming that, that means that, um, that the ED staff can consume alcohol, but that, that they are not, that alcohol is not gonna be paid for by county funds. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, it's a, that language is just a little bit confusing, I think, that, um, why not just say that, uh, I think it's when you add the word reasonable cost, why not just say the cost of such alcohol shall not be borne by the authority from funds provided by the county?
That, that's a fair point. That, that was added in by the IDA. I didn't have time to, to change that. That was sort of a last-second wording change. But I think, I mean, I think the general gist of it is, is there.
So I, I would just, I, I would just remove the term, the word reasonable because I think that second reasonable confuses everything. And then, do you see what I'm saying? I think that it, it leaves it, leaves it open to like, well, so does that mean unreasonable costs or whatever? I mean, you know, it just, it's a little bit, it's just, it's a strenuous word that I think can be left out to, to eliminate any confusion. And then if you go to the section on compensation on page four of the IGA, I, I read that to mean that these human resources services are, um, are going to be paid, that, that the IDA or the economic development employees will be utilizing HR services from the county. But the IDA is going to reimburse the county for those services. Is that correct?
Well, the, the, the county will be reimbursed for the benefits and salary payments. We thought that having the county fund the IDA only for the IDA to turn around and reimburse us for in-kind costs seemed like an unnecessary shifting of funds back and forth. I don't know that the IDA would necessarily object. It just didn't seem like it had a, a good purpose.
I thought we had already addressed that.
So, so, okay, so it's just confusing the way the IGA is written. That at least, maybe it's not confusing, maybe I'm just confused. So the county would appropriate the $350,000 to the, to the IDA for the provision of economic development.
Right.
And then the additional, the additional costs of benefits that are provided to the, um, any kind of HR services such as benefits are going to be, that additional amount is gonna turn around and reimburse the county for that. Is that correct? If that's the way the IGA reads?
Uh, yes, I just want to distinguish between, between like salary and benefit actual costs, which we will get reimbursed for versus, you know, the, the extra time our staff has to spend, you know, cutting the checks, which we will not get reimbursed for.
Okay, that, yeah, because it does say in here, actual cost of salary and benefits and other payments made on the authority's behalf. And that will be reimbursed back to the county?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, so the last question that I have is related, is back on the travel expense policy. And that's the use of a credit card. I'm assuming that the use of the credit card is covered in the purchasing policy because, um, you know, in our purchasing policy, P-card use is addressed in the purchasing policy. So is that addressed in the purchasing policy?
Yes, I think that was taken almost word for word from the county's policy. I have to, I have to confirm that. Then I'll do that in a second.
Yeah, unfortunately, I still don't have any internet service, so I'm gonna have to kind of, when I, when I finish talking, I'll go back and I'll look on my phone. But you sent that purchasing policy to us?
Um, I'm, I'm doing it now. I'm sorry. I've been, you know.
You've been, you've been trying to do two things at once? Okay, all right.
I think Megan said she just sent it. Did, is that right, Megan?
It was Lisa. I just.
Oh, Lisa, okay, sorry.
Yeah. I also sent it out.
All right, well, I will, um, I will relinquish the floor while, so I can look at it.
Commissioner Anderson, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I, I just have a, a couple of questions and maybe a, a comment. Man, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, we are gonna be the laughing stock through a whole lot of counties. Because I think Mr. Wuggen, Mr. Wuggenberg, how, how am I pronouncing your name? I don't wanna mispronounce it.
Uh, Van Wockenberg.
Van Wockenberg. He said something about perks or what it is. These people, uh, Mr. Dave and Ms. Sarah, will be under the county policy. Almost, it'd be under county policy and get all the same things, the regular counter benefits and then more. They even had the possibility of going out and receiving even more bonuses, even though they're not called bonuses. They may be called perks or they may be called something else. And so to try to get a, for me to try to get a better clarification of, of, of the employees that are, I went straight to the City of Covington. The, the gentleman, they, they. The, the gentleman that they, that they hired on their end. And I said, well, how do y'all pay this gentleman? I said, what, is he just a regular employee? And she's under the same regulations and standards as the city's employees. He don't go out and get special privileges, privileges of going out. So I go over to him to a bar and pay for him a drink. And then I sit down and drink, I just don't have drank too much. Then I just pay for it out of my pocket. He don't get special perks or bonuses. He's under the state of covenant policy. So, but yet we're doing all this. And we're putting on our employees and yet we're, we're taking the, the money and just throwing it out there. So hey, this and that, didn't have no control over it. They just a barrel breaker for the county employers who have spent the biggest part of their life working. Now, what we should do, which I don't think we'll do it, we should do is for them to be treated the same as our rest of county employers. Come up on our same god regulations as our rest of them. See, we're spending all the money. I have never known somebody to pay for somebody help and then give the help to somebody else and pay for whatever they wanted. And we're putting the bill. I just, it's hard for me to understand it. I don't know, I'm probably from the, I'm probably from the old school, you know, the kind that they were then. You treat all of us the same or as best we can. But I think that's really a bad idea for us to do it that way. I think it should fall on the county, it should fall on the county policies, policy. And let, so she's taking everything on Lord. And let him, uh, be, want to listen to what their needs are and what they should do. And then he make a, a recommendation or had a authority of how to do what he sees fit or best for our economic development team. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I've been kind of back and forth on this, but I, I still believe the Economic Development Group ought to work for a third-party entity. I think the Industrial Development Authority is the best entity we've got out there right now. It's similar to what we had at the Chamber of Commerce and the way we were funding that. I know we're getting into disputes, I suppose, about policy and supervision and things like that. Things that, that I'm not sure really apply because their, their job is a little bit different than, than the normal county employee. So I really don't have a problem with, with the, uh, working for the IDA. I think that's, in my, in my view of things, that's the best model to look for. I think it works similar as the Solid Waste Authority. And I know Solid Waste Authority has following county policies on certain things too. But again, I think the nature of their job and what they are required to do requires them to, to be a little bit more independent than being subject to a board of commissioners or a county council or anything like that. I think it's, I, I'm not sure, I, I want my industrial development or my economic development people subject to the political whims of, of elected officials. No, that's just my take on it. I mean, I don't mean to offend anybody, but that's just how I feel about it. And I think, I think the IDA is the right model to use there. So until I can, until I can be just turned another way, that's, I'm, I'm comfortable with what we've got.
Thanks, sir. Hold on one, I'm coming back to you in one second, Mr., Mr., uh, I mean Commissioner Edwards, I'm sorry. Mr. Kerr, you wanna say a couple of things before?
Sorry, I lost you there for a second. I would agree with, with what Ronnie said to say. I think the appropriate place for them, for the economic development to be housed really is with the Industrial Development Authority. I would also say that if we are not, if they are, since they would be reporting to the IDA, I'm not sure exactly why the, I mean, at one point, the board did want to review the policies, although I'm not exactly sure why. It's because they're not going to be reporting to the board and the, they want to be developing their own policies. So I'm not sure what the, whether or not you approve those policies if they're reporting to the IDA. I don't know what the purpose there might be. But I, I think the, as far as the, the, the agreement between us and the IDA, I've read through it. I think it serves the, its purpose. I don't have any objections to it. Again, I agree that the IDA is the proper place for it to be housed. The employees do have the type of work that they do, the type of, of, because of that, because of their contact with the industry, it's very, it is very difficult. Our policies would not, just quite frankly, they would not allow them to do the job that they need to do in order to attract the, the businesses in the industry and all here. So in my mind, I think we're doing the, the, doing the appropriate thing by housing economic development with the, with the Industrial Development Authority. And that we would support them as we have in the past through an appropriation. And that that would be the, the appropriate way to do this. That does allow them some latitude in how that they conduct their business. But, pardon me, but also it allows the input from the board to help guide them in their direction and still gives them accountability. They do have accountability to the board in the way of reporting. And also because they come to you for appropriation, then they are accountable to you for the way that they spend the taxpayers' dollars and for the programs that they pursue. So they do have some accountability to you ultimately.
Um, thank you, sir. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Edwards and then I, I'm gonna make, make a couple of comments myself. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, so I think I heard Sam say that the, uh, the, the economic development team, if they report to the IDA, will come back to us with a strategic plan to be approved by us. Here's, here's, here's what I'll say. We, as of this upcoming fiscal year, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, our economic development budget doubled. City of Covington no longer, no longer will participate. I hear encouraging things about that, that may, that may change in the future or they may want to have some, some, some level of participation. But in that strategic plan, I don't, I don't know if it can, I don't know if it can state it specifically. But my recommendation would be that we have something in place that says if we're gonna work on, if our ED, if the ED team we're gonna fund solely by the, at the county level, is gonna work on projects within the city limits that we build a city covenant at a fifty percent rate of the particular, of that bill. I would, I, I, with that, I can, I can support this, this particular option. But I would expect that strategic plan to come back to us with some very, with some specific limitations with, relative to what's happening in the city limits of Covington. I'm, I'm, I'm still not over, I'm still not over us being left with three hundred and fifty thousand dollar ED budget just overnight. So I would ask that they include that in the strategic plan. And with that, I will support the current option. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Guys, I'm gonna say a quick, a couple of words right quick. You know, and I wanna address a couple of things that were said. You know, I, I've been, I've been on the JDA now for three years. Well, let me just start with, with Commissioner Edwards just said. You know, I've been preaching One Newton for a while now. And I agree with you. I, I would love for the city of Covington to be a part of, of this. But the facts are that they're, they're not. They chose to go a different direction. And as a county, as a board, when we say we want to, we'll pick up the slack and fund ED for them to continue to go out and represent Newton, represent Newton County in the best possible light that they can. When we, when we agreed to take on that challenge, you know, we agreed to do that. You know, that's with the city of Covington possibly coming back or without them coming back. We still agreed to do that. And that's what we got, that's the thing that we got to focus on. We, you know, I wish, I wish they were still in the mix. And I, I know you guys are too. You don't want to put the bill out by yourself. I don't either. ED will be putting over a hundred thousand dollars towards this to complete their budget. But then, guys, let me share this with you. I've been on the JDA for three years now. And economic development just don't operate like regular employees. They can't come in and clock in and say, hey, we here, we here at, at nine and we getting off at five. Because there've been several times since I've been on that board that we get a call. I mean, we get a call at nine o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night. And they're asking to, to prepare a proposal that has to be in. You know, they can't call everybody and say, hey, guys, we got this proposal, dah, 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 dah. They, you know, I mean, do y'all, will y'all vote to pass this or will y'all vote to do that? It just, it's not possible. And meet the time, the time limit that's put in that they're asked to be, this asked to be put in place. It's just not possible. You know, if, if a potential industry is coming to Newton County and they need to do a, a fly-in, they gotta be ready, they gotta be ready to, to do that. And those are the things that, you know, I don't know how much all of us know what ED actually does. But those are the things, they got to be able to move on the, on the instant, at the instant, on the dime. It's just, it's just the way it is. Like I said, I've been watching it now for three years and that's just the way it works. You know, that, that's, that's just my, my two cents. I think, you know, I'm on the IDA and I'm, I'm pushing, I'm pushing for it because I see the work that they do on the IDA. And I mean, then you actually ask yourself a question. Over the last three years since we've been, Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Cowan and myself came on board, there's a lot of stuff that been did. A lot of, a lot of industries that have expanded. So I, I don't think that they're been bad stewards over the finances. I think they've been good steward over the finances. There's a lot of things that has taken place. I could start naming if you, if you would like me to. Mishimbo, John Mills, SKC. I know you're gonna say all this in the city of Covington, Facebook, Lidl. Things like that are in the county. But let me say, John Mills, they do, they still, they pay taxes too that the county benefits from. So there's been a lot of things that have taken place over the last three years. A lot, a lot, a lot of jobs have been created upon the Dave and Sarah's leadership. I'm, I'm leaving it at that, guys. Anyone else have anything?
Ms. Chairman, let me make one comment about the city of Covington.
Go ahead, sir.
I know, I know some people have been concerned about them taking their own direction with economic development. And, and you and I have discussed this, but I want the other board members to understand the city of Covington's main priority right now are utilities. And that's electrical, gas and selling that because they use that to offset having to demand high taxes inside town. So their interest is to push and try to get development in that will use their utilities. Now, from the county's viewpoint, everything that gets built in the city, the county gets, gets a tax revenue from. So whatever's good for them is good for the county too. So it's not like we're, it's them or us. It's not, nothing like that at all. If we have industry that wants to locate in the county, then ED obviously wants to compete and sell utilities if they're able to. If they're in their service areas, sell utility, electric, gas and, and oil. Because that's how they get their revenue. So I, I don't want anybody to look at it as, it's a us and them type attitude or mentality. They have a totally different interest than, than the county does. The county, we want development and we're gonna get revenue from tax revenue that comes in from that. Doesn't matter whether it's in the city or the county. But they are specifically concerned, I think, about some of the plant vocal costs and what they're gonna have to deal with down the road. They want to build their customer base. And I don't blame them. I mean, they, they want to go with an internal economic development group. I think, I think that's probably good. I mean, because they've got to look at, look after what they're trying to do for their, for their city. And that's just my thoughts of it. It's just what I've observed over the years. I mean, that, that's where our money, majority of the money that the city had came from the utility space.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schultz.
So I'd like to go back to the IGA because it, you know, I, there's no question that, that we're in a position where, that we would have liked to have had the city of Covington, but we don't. And so I'd really like to focus in on what the specifics are of this IGA. And specifically the relationship of the two employees. The IGA is going to be the employer, but these two employees will be treated as county employees as per Section one dot, dot three of this IGA. Now, my understanding is that all the county benefits will be reimbursed by the, by the IDA as per, as per the IGA. Correct, that's what we've established. But let's say, for example, workers' compensation. Let's say that there's a workers' compensation claim. I don't see anything mentioned in here about workers' compensation. I'm making the assumption that that's a benefit, but it does not spelled out to my knowledge in here that workers' compensation, that a workers' compensation claim would also be paid by the IDA if that, if there was a claim that arose. So Sam, can you speak to that?
With respect to workers' compensation, I, I would feel more comfortable deferring to Megan or Amanda. I doubt Amanda's on the line, but that's, that's sort of outside my expertise. I know that.
Sam, it's, if you want me to jump in on that, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
Hey, Megan, why you, why you doing that? Can you also explain that they are not county employees, they're IDA employees? Because I think that's.
Sure, I'll be happy to.
Okay.
As, as already been mentioned by Sam, it is an IDA employment relationship. However, Commissioner Schultz brings up a wonderful point in the context of workers' compensation. I feel like it would be an almost certainty that we would be found to be joint employers for purposes of any workers' comp claim that came in. The workers' compensation board is going to look at. Uh, the workers' compensation board is going to look at how they are paid, what they were doing during the course and scope of their employment that caused such injury. Uh, that is not addressed that I can find, but we can certainly add some language there. But that does open the Pandora's box. Then we're gonna have, okay, workers' comp, what about unemployment compensation? Well, unemployment is going to fall on us because they're going to utilize our EIN. Now, it is my understanding that there's reimbursement contemplated within the agreement itself. We can make any change you'd like to address that specifically. Um, not just the work comp, not just the unemployment, would make it pretty broad regarding the employment relationship and what our expectations of responsibility would be in that.
Megan, I thought they was gonna use, um, I thought it's gonna use IDA EIN.
Chairman Baines, you're exactly right. I forgot that was in our last, last call. They are going to use the IDA's EIN. So, um, that, that is establishing that employment relationship. I still believe, even though we, we are pushing that as the employer, that a court of competent jurisdiction, um, as far as the state board goes, they're going to err on the side of the employee who's been injured. So if we could work in some reimbursement language that says that the IDA will reimburse us for anything that we put out that might be paid on behalf of the employee, again, thinking work comp, thinking unemployment insurance. Um, that would be a good vehicle to accomplish what we've put together here, but also try to be as protective as we can regarding the county's financial investments.
So Megan, I also have a question about limits of liability. So let's just say that they have a, um, they caused some type of injury. What is, what are our legal limits of liability in considering that we are, even though the, the IDA is technically the employer, we are operating to, it does say here that for the purposes, the employee compensation, including benefits, will be treated as county employees integrated into the county's employment, a human resources system. So are, are we absolved of any legal limits of liability?
I'm going to turn that one over to Sam. Sam, can you jump on that one? I should not look at the insurance language closely. Do you know right off the bat?
Um, I, I don't know for a hundred percent certain, but I, I believe if it's anything like the the Solid Waste Authority, which it's intended to, that they will all be covered under the county's blanket policies.
So will we, will we be reimbursed for that? Will the county be reimbursed for that, then?
For, for the cost of the insurance coverage, or for, or for?
If, if there's a legal, um, claim, and, and they're covered under the county's, the county's insurance policy, you know, the county's insurance policy may, may go up because of that. Will that, is that something that, then that can be reimbursed also by the IDA?
We can, we can certainly add that in specifically. It's obviously not in there right now, it's in that specifics.
I mean, I just think that anything that we, that would result from their relationship as, you know, it's a kind of a messy situation, that they're employees of the IDA, but then they're county employees so that they can get benefits. I think we need to, but, but the IDA is willing to pay for that. I think we need to be very clear what's, what the IDA would be willing to pay for in, in, in the event that there are some unforeseen circumstances.
I would, I would only add to that, that while these are, are really, really good questions, the, the county is the one that's funding the IDA for economic development, so if the IDA has extra anticipated costs, they'll probably just put them right back into their budget.
And, and IDA don't generate funds, I mean, all the money that IDA is gonna come from the county, so.
But it's all taxpayer money, so we just need to make sure where the taxpayer money, how it's, I mean, if we want to just give them a, an appropriation and let them manage it all themselves, I just, you know, it's, we're, we are expecting them to come back and reimburse us for that salary and those benefits. So I just think that workers' comp is something that we have to factor in, and then liability is also something that needs to be factored in.
Can I make a comment there, Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you. Please.
Oh, the simplest way to do this, and Megan, I think you know where, where I'm heading, but the simplest way to do this is just to add them as additional insured on our work comp and our, um, liability policy. And then if there's a claim, uh, they just reimburse us for the deductible. And what the pocket expense, I think is probably similar arrangement we had with our, with our, trying to remember who we had it with, but, um, the city did that where we would add people on as additional insured.
Mr. Cowan, that's a very good idea. That, that would solve some of these insurance woes that we're going back and forth on. I also see that Chair Sims is on the call as well. He may be able to answer some questions regarding what the IDA's position is regarding these reimbursements, and may be able to answer some of the questions that Sam and I would not have the advantage of knowing, yes, they are represented by separate counsel.
Mr. Chair, can I jump in real quick if Chairman Sims' jump comes on?
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to add, kind of just get some clarity in my brain. You just mentioned that the IDA doesn't generate revenue at all, so I'm wondering if they don't generate revenue, how are they gonna reimburse us for anything?
I'm gonna let Chairman Sims jump on the phone, I mean, jump on the phone. And you can propose that question to him, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Chairman Sims, are you there? I mean, they, they generate funds. I mean, you got land sales, bond deals, things like that. Let me, let me get him on the phone. Chairman Sims, are you there?
This, Mr. Chairman, this Lloyd, if I could maybe help out on that question, Commissioner Mason.
Okay.
What they're gonna do, Commissioner, is we will be giving them, economic development will be treated as a, as an appropriation, just as they have been in the past. We will be appropriating three hundred fifty thousand dollars to the IDA to cover the expenses of the economic, operating the Economic Development Office. And then the economic, the IDA will reimburse us for the costs of the salaries and so forth. We will handle the paperwork for the salaries and for the benefits and all of their two employees. And then they will reimburse us out of the appropriation that we give them for the cost of all of those benefits and salaries. So that's how they're paying for it. Essentially, we're moving money from us to, we are giving, or putting money from, taking money from us, sending it to them in the form of an appropriation, and then they are sending that money back to us in the form of a reimbursement for their costs of their, of their employees' benefits and salaries.
So Lloyd, with that being said, and, and maybe I'm, I'm not getting it. Wouldn't that, if we, if we're giving them funds, and then they're giving us those funds back, how are they able to give us those funds back if those funds are going towards benefits, salaries, because it seems like that money is going out, so it's gone. So I don't understand how that money is coming back in to be able to give back to us. I think that's what my confusion lies.
Yes, that's correct. It's part of their budget. That three hundred fifty thousand dollars is their operating budget. Included in that operating budget are salaries and benefits, and all the other things that they need. You know, pens, pencils, staples, what have, what have you. So we will be, um, covering their personnel with the insurance and doing all those things and issuing a paycheck to them based on whatever salary they're being paid. And then we will send them a bill for that. So out of the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've given them, they will take the budgeted amount that was set aside for salaries and reimburse us for the salary, the cost of the salary.
Okay, so basically kind of almost what Mr. Chair said earlier. You know, they have other revenue sources like bond deals, land sales, outside of the monies or the funding that we appropriate to them, so they can reimburse us out of those bond deals or land sale monies that they generate, that's how they're gonna reimburse us.
Well, they could, but if they had no other, no other source of funds, if they didn't make any land sales, they would still be reimbursing us out of the appropriation.
Yeah. Okay.
Maybe, maybe to do a little drawing for you, because sometimes, I know it's, it's, it's a little hard to understand, but but, but actually they are, they would reimburse us out of their appropriation.
Okay. Thank you.
Get together on it, next time we get together, explain to you this.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Henderson. Hey.
Uh, thank you.
Hey, first, let me, Commissioner Mason, I need to step away right quick. Commissioner Henderson has a question, and after that, Commissioner Sims, I mean Chairman Sims and Sarah Hall is on as well. I'll be back in three minutes.
Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry, you can go ahead, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. C. Okay, the question that I have is, uh, I heard that, um, that you, that you were saying that that money comes from the land sales, so I was thinking, and I could be wrong, that the land sales, or it was, most of the land sale was already counted property that had been purchased, uh, years, uh, years ago, and sold to, to the different companies like Facebook, et cetera, who came in. And always had, it had been allocated, you know, a certain portion of that money goes, goes back to the county for the money that the taxpayers had, had purchased for that particular piece of property. And so I was just, and maybe Chairman Sims, or Miss Sarah, or Dave, whomever on the line, may, maybe to clarify a little bit, in my mind, especially if we say that some of the money, all the money will be reimbursed back to the county. How, how does that work through the land sales or, or whatever other funds that may come in? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir, as well. Um, is Sarah on or Chairman Sims, just to kind of help us bring some clarification or clarity? I think I remember, uh...
I think they have to be unmuted, don't they?
Yes, they should be able to unmute themselves.
Star six.
Yeah, they can press star six or
Mr. Mason, can you hear me?
Yes, hey, Sarah, we can hear you.
Hi. Um, yes, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your questions and comments regarding this. Commissioner Henderson, to answer your question, if the development authority owns land, then my understanding that if they sold land, that funding source would then come back to the authority. Stanton Springs is completely separate and owned by the Joint Development Authority of Stanton Springs. And they have different sets of policies and procedures regarding any type of land sale or land transfer because it is a joint development authority. So this would only pertain to property that is owned by the Industrial Development Authority. And I think that the comment was really going around, what other revenue sources does the development authority have? And so that would be one avenue. Again, another avenue would bond deals, or when we provide bonds for companies or things like that, there is revenue coming off of that. And then other funding sources from other partners. You all have spoke many, tonight about the city of Covington, we do have other agencies that have at times provided funds or looked at their funding sources if need be for specific projects, so that is another source of revenue as potential. I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate that. I'm gonna turn it back over to Chairman Baines, he's returned.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Did Chairman Sims get an opportunity to talk?
He did not as of yet.
Okay.
I'm, I'm here, Mr. Chairman, if you, if, if you guys have any questions for me.
Okay. Commissioner Schultz, did you want to ask your question now? Didn't you have a question?
Well, I, I guess really my question is, I just really believe that all we really need to focus on tonight is this IGA. I don't know that we really need to talk about the travel policy or the purchasing policy, because if they are, if these, if the employees are technically employees of the IDA, I just want to make sure that, that there's a provision related to workers' comp and a provision related to legal limits of liability. I think that, um, Commissioner Cowan addressed that by adding them on as additionally insured. So I, I, from my perspective, my only concern is, is addressing the IGA. I would like to know, going back to Commissioner Edwards' first comment about Plan A and Plan B, what happened with Plan A and Plan B, because I know that that was something that we had requested, so is there, what, can we, what, what happened? Did we just determine that, did the chamber just determine that it was, this was the best way to go?
Mr. Chairman, this is Lanier, if you want me to
Yes, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir.
And Sarah, if you, if you can jump in as well. We did have a option from the Chamber of Commerce, and I do not have it in front of me, so Sarah, you're gonna have to help me a little bit with numbers. But I believe the chamber, uh, was, uh, going to charge us seven, I believe it was seven fifty. Debbie's actually on the call, if we can unmute her, and she can actually give us Option B better than I could.
Hey, this is Debbie, I'm on the call, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, yes, the chamber did have an option for admin purposes. I do have that in a separate screen, but it was, if you would like me to share that, I think I have the ability to share. Um, can you see that?
Yes.
Um, this is what the, um, chamber had offered, and basically there was two options within it. It was an admin option A, which was seven hundred and fifty dollars per month that provided that payroll service, benefits, workers' comp, an umbrella policy for the chamber, and director and officer policy. But of course, those same reimbursements you all have mentioned would come back to the chamber for salary and benefits. And then, uh, option B, under our Um, and then, uh, option B, under our scenario, was fifteen hundred dollars per month that included those things, but also included, um, accounts payable, accounts receivable, bank reconciliation, monthly reconciliation reporting, um, to you all and the IDA, and monthly reporting to both entities. So there was a flow chart at the top that kind of summarizes that as well. And the chamber president is kind of a liaison between the chamber, and the chamber president sits on the IDA. And they would be chamber employees with oversight and, um, management, um, from the IDA. Are there any questions?
So are...
Go ahead, Commissioner Sho.
So are we to assume then that, um, I mean, we didn't get this proposal, so are we to assume then that the IDA made the determination that this was not the most financially advantageous? Or how did we get down to just one?
Um, well, I think the, the issue with this was the fact that, that, um, we would charge a fee um, for administering that admin piece. And with their budget being cut like it was, um, I don't know that the county was willing to help out on that. Um, and they didn't, and, and well, I don't wanna say they, I would say the IDA did not wanna have to take that out of their budget.
So that's about another nine, that's about another nine thousand dollars a year just for the administrative fee on top of the, the payroll and the benefits?
Yes, if, if you're looking at Option A under this.
Okay, all right. That helps me understand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
So, yes, from the IDA perspective, you know, this was a cost that we don't really have in the budget to pay for. We, we, we're working on a much shorter budget than we have in years past. Um, so we're trying to do all we can to maximize the money that we do have. So, uh, I brought to the IDA, uh, yesterday as well as, uh, picking up on the IDA's dime, uh, some of the rent, or all of the rent. Uh, so we can save money for the actual budget of, you know, trying to go out and, and recruit. Um, so when we looked at this, at least when I looked at this, it was, it, it's all about a cost savings. You know, I asked Mr. Kerr, what is, what is that cost to the county? And from our discussion, that was an in-kind service. So from my perspective, zero versus, uh, the cost of the chamber. Um, so that's, that's basically how I got to, you know, my decision.
Yeah, I, I... Listen. I don't, I just don't think we need to get, get involved with the operations, man.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
Can I, can I ask Megan a question, please?
Sure can.
And Sam?
You sure can.
Megan, you there?
Hold it. Yes, Sarah, I had to unmute. My apologies.
Okay. All right. Couldn't all this be solved fairly easy if we did, that they were, if you made them county employees and you just did a lease agreement through the IDA? And we handle all the administrative part as our employees, they're subject to our procedures, uh, up to the point that the IDA says we want to do something different, uh, and let them be leased to them. They can lease them for a dollar a year for all I care. I don't, it doesn't... This, this thing about reimbursing and cost shifting back and forth, that sounds about somebody nuts. I just don't think that's the right way to do it. And I ain't, I'm not criticizing how y'all put that together, but I just think it'd be better to just do them as leasing employees. And keep them under the county ID...
We have, I'm sorry, sorry, go ahead.
And keep them under the county, uh, employee ID number, and then all the, the comp, the insurance, the unemployment, the vacations, the benefit, whatever, whatever they got is under one umbrella. All we're doing is leasing the supervision and the exercise of control and responsibility to the IDA and let them correct them to do their job. Wouldn't it be easier? My thoughts.
Would you, uh, Mr. Megan?
It looks like she just sent a, a message that said she got disconnected.
Oh.
But I, I'll certainly take her, her comments, but I, I, my initial impression is there, there were a lot of things, whether they be county human resources policies or, or purchasing policies and the things we've previously talked about, that, that caused, uh, economic development staff quite a bit of heartburn just insofar as how different they would be from what they were accustomed to as chamber employees. And so I think your idea has a lot of merit, but I, I think there would still be quite a few logistical hurdles, especially to satisfy the economic development employees, that they could continue providing their jobs, uh...
Well, I, I did give them a separate employment agreement. That's all we gotta do. I mean, they, they, they're, they're under the county employment, but their operational agreement is different than other county employees. That's just the way I look at it. I think we're gonna get so confused with money back and forth, somebody's gonna pull their hair out. I, I just prefer things to be simple.
There certainly is an element of, you know, we envisioned this one way at the beginning, and then the city didn't wanna participate, and, and so we sort of were working off our original agreement. If we had to start over, I think you're right. I, I'd probably do it your way. The question is, can we, can we save that? Can we save this deal in time?
Yeah.
Well, I think if you're getting confusion right now.
I think it's simple, guys. I think, I mean, attorney, attorney's worked on this. We worked on this for weeks. A lot of money been spent on this, attorney fees and all kind of other stuff, trying to make this work. I mean, and there's a plan that they helped put out there. Guys, we're not, no, micromanaging is not, not, not the way you operate with ED. It's just not. You can't do it.
Uh, we're not talking about micromanaging, Mr. Chairman. We're talking about leasing the employees to the IDA and letting them run it.
I'm not talking about that.
All we're doing, all we're doing is just letting them handle the, the administrative part on our side without having to do this back and forth exchange of money.
No, 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 I'm not talking about your, I'm not talking about what you just said. I'm talking about all the time. I'm talking about what you said earlier. This is the best, um, this is the best option for us, is to make them IDA employees and, uh, make amendments to the policy. That's what you stated earlier. So I'm disagreeing with you on what you said. And I'm just adding that.
I'm, again, I have no problem with them being over there, but all this discussion about money back and forth and all the things that we come out with has just brought up a lot of scenarios. It's just gonna create problems, and I think the easiest way to do it is just do a lease agreement. That's just my opinion. Y'all can do it either way. I don't care.
Mr. Chairman, could we poll the board until we can move forward? Maybe go home sometime?
Yeah, we can poll the board. Uh...
Hey, don't, don't change this 'cause I made that recommendation. I just, I just asked a question, and you think it's easier?
I guess people know about this. I think, I personally think that's a great idea. I think that would, uh, uh, maybe solve the problem from, from most people, I think Nancy and Stan and, um, and my friend, District Two Commissioner. As far as the board running or unloading, then it may be that, that's the party that we said, it may be able to run it to a certain degree.
So I'm gonna start, let me start from the top. So do we, Commissioner Mason, and not Commissioner Edwards, uh... Do you support, um, them being IDA employees or county leased employees? I guess that's what.
Well, my preference was, my, my original preference was having them be county employees and leased to the IDA, but I had reached a point to where I, I could have gone with the other option as well. I...
Guys, let me, let me just say this. Let me say this. Guys, we, we, we putting a lot on lower. We really is. And I'm gonna say it, and, and I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be the first one to say it. Uh, we putting, we throwing a lot at it. We really are. Uh, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask him, I'm gonna ask him to speak up before I poll the board. Uh, Lord, what's your, what's your, what's your, what's your thought about this?
Well, as far as the employees go, yes. I'm not quite sure I understand the direction that Commissioner Cowan would like to go. As, but if it can be handled simple enough with paper, if we're not, uh, you know, if it doesn't require, if I'm not supervising them, if I'm not providing any kind of oversight, I'm fine with doing the lease if that's what the will, the, the will of the board is. If they want to not do the lease, that's fine too. Either way, I can work with either one of them. I just need to know which way the board would like to go. But I will say this, uh, I'm not in favor of them becoming county employees if they are going to report to me, because I don't have the time. Uh, and, uh, and as you stated, it's, they would have to, they really need to operate independently, and I just don't think it would be a wise thing to, to have them under my purview. Um, so I can work either way if it's a lease. I'm not exactly sure how that would work, but I'm sure we can make it work if we need to. But, um, you know, the, they can be, uh, they, and as far as the money situation, this is the, we've done this with other entities, uh, where, uh, I don't, I think we, we've got a system worked out where we can handle the appropriation and then the reimbursement for the salary. Um, that's the cleanest way. I know it seems like we pass money back and forth, but that is the cleanest way to handle that. But if a lease suits the board better, and if that's the pleasure of the board, I'll be glad to do that. Uh, I just need to clear a direction on which way the board wants to go.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna clear up one thing. I'm not advocating a lease. I'm just saying, is that a better way to do it? Because I don't have no problem with them being IDA employees. Okay, I have a problem with this reimbursement and shifting money back and forth and all these conflicting policies and all that stuff. That's gonna be a headache. That's gonna be the headache. And I'd rather just, sir?
You know, we had agreed, I mean, we had said we was gonna do it. I don't know, I guess we changing now. But we had said that we wasn't gonna be charging them fees for, you know, operation.
And that's fine. I, I, hey, give it to them and don't, don't worry about this reimbursement stuff. That's what's gonna drive me nuts. And it'll drive your administrative people crazy too, trying to keep up with that. Um, I'd say, you know, the original agreement that Sam put together that they are, uh, IDA employees subject to the county benefits as far as, um, insurance, benefits, those things like that, have no problem with that, as long as we're not gonna get into this money shifting thing, because that's when things get messed up. That's just my opinion. I, I threw a lease out there as an option to clean all that up, but that may not be the best thing. Maybe the best thing is go like we are, but I, I don't like the idea of shifting money back and forth between two entities.
Guys, I'm, I'm gonna call for the, you know what, we got a... We had, we have a number, uh, number thirteen item on the agenda. And to clear up confusion, I'm gonna call for a vote. But we can either vote it up, vote it down. Uh, I, I seek a motion. I seek a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you were polling the board. You, you stopped, you paused.
Commissioner Henderson.
You got to poll the board. You can't just jump from one thing to the other thing.
No, I, I'm gonna poll, I'm, I don't have to poll the board. I'm gonna call for a motion. Y'all can vote it up or vote it down. We're not just gonna keep going through this all night long. This, 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 this is... If you don't wanna fund them, then hey. If you do wanna fund them, then fund them.
I move for approval of the intergovernmental agreement between Newton County, Georgia, and the Newton County Industrial Development Authority for the provision of services related to economic development.
Second District Two.
Uh, so, sorry, Chairman, can I, can I jump in?
Go ahead, Sam.
I know the IDA will, will want us to approve, uh, all of the documents, so I would request rephrasing.
I, I, that's not part of my motion, because I don't believe, if, if we're gonna have an, uh, an IGA with them, I think that they can have their own, uh, travel and purchasing policy. I'm just appro, I'm just making a motion for the intergovernmental agreement. If somebody wants to make a substitute motion, they can do that.
Could you restate the motion, please?
I move for approval of the intergovernmental agreement between Newton County, Georgia, and the Newton County Industrial Development Authority for the provision of services related to economic development.
Can I do a second?
Second.
Can, can I, I'm sorry. I, I just, I know this is gonna cause trouble, so can I just request one, something, I'm not gonna ask it like I asked it before. Can I ask for approval of the IGA with removal of provisions that require county approval of the other documents?
Hey, that works.
That, that's fine with me.
That works. Can you, can you state that, Commissioner Sho?
Approval of the IGA with removal of the documents that require county approval.
Thank you. Can I get it?
Second, District Two.
This is a motion by Commissioner Sho and second by Commissioner Mason. All right, here we go. Any discussion?
Still a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question is, and this is to the attorney, uh, by removing county approval, what does it do to the motion?
It, it means that the sections in the IGA that call for us to approve purchasing policies or travel policies or employment agreements before they can become effective are taken out, and the IDA is free to enter into or adopt those agreements or policies without needing our approval.
Okay, so we just, so we just, um, we just, uh, we just give them thirty thousand dollars a month and just, and they do what they wanna do with it.
I don't know how to put it that way, but I hear you.
I mean, it's just like, it's like every other pro, preparation that we do, we give out, we give a pro, preparation out to viewpoint help.
Hey, I'm, hey, I'm understanding. I'm just, I'm, I just, I, there was a question that I asked to the, to the attorney.
Yeah.
And, you know, so maybe I got a, got an answer. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone, anyone else? Any more discussion?
Uh, yeah, but I'm kinda afraid that's...
Go ahead.
Uh, just wanna make, ask Sam this question. Uh, this guy in there, we're, we're reimbursing... Uh, it's got in there, we're, we're reimbursing, the, the authorities reimbursing the county for actual costs of all salary and benefits. We're making that, we're making an appropriation of them and they're gonna give us money back, right?
Right.
That's just, that's, that, okay.
And can I, can I, can I add on to what, uh, Commissioner Cowan just said, uh, Sam? It is, is this the same thing that we was doing pretty much with the chamber, right?
Um, well, we, uh, we weren't paying the salaries of the employees with the chamber, so it's different in that way. I mean, we weren't directly paying the chamber employees.
But the money that we allocated was going directly to payroll for the chamber, that's correct.
Yeah, yes, yes, sir, yes.
But we pretty much doing the same thing. Thank you, sir. Anyone else have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye from District One.
Aye from District Two.
Aye from District Three.
May from District Four.
Commissioner Cowan?
Well, I, I'm, I'm gonna support it. Aye from District Five.
Thank, the pass is four one. Um. Next on the agenda is, um, citizen comment. There's an opportunity, we let citizens make comments on any topic. You may, you have three minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Hi, this, hi, this is Sarah Doby, one thirty-five Hunter Ridge Drive. I appreciate the fact of doing this with a, doing it with a, doing a meeting as a Zoom meeting because I could see the schedules that people put up and read them, which means that when we finally get back to having a person-to-person meetings, I would really appreciate a bigger font so that I can read things from where I am seated. I really appreciated being able to read them. I also wanted to say about when you were getting into the talking about what to do when we have future pandemics, which we probably will if we don't stop messing around in parts of the world that we don't need to be, um, like deep jungles, et cetera, where we end up releasing stuff that was contained in its environment, that anytime you have a, a situation where you're gonna have massive public death, privacy just doesn't hold up. To me HIPAA just meant that the national security people could, um, get the information when maybe my own family members could not.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? If your phone is on mute, please, um, press star six to be unmuted.
Mr. Chairman, this is, uh, Lanier Sims, uh, two fifty-five Sims Road, Covington. Uh, first, I just wanna thank the, uh, the BOC tonight. And I want, also want to assure the BOC that we're gonna work through this to make this process simple. If you guys have any questions along the way, I think everybody on the BOC has my personal cell number. Um, give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
This is Debbie Harper, one hundred Bear Creek, Walt Covington, and I'm with the chamber. I'd like to echo what, um, uh, Mr. Sam said, and if anyone has any questions to reach out to me as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Chairman, thanks. This is Sarah Hall, um, one, Stephanie Terrace Covington. Uh, I just wanna say thank you to each of you tonight. I know it's been a long night and a lengthy, but I wanna thank you all for the consideration and always being supportive of economic development. I also wanna echo the fact that, um, what's discussed earlier regarding the strategic plan, that's something that Dave and I are very supportive of for you all setting the vision and the path. And we are, uh, very grateful that we continue to work with each of you in your department, um, to help make sure that the vision and the strategic planning of our community is done in the correct manner. Um, I do wanna say thank you to, um, people like Debbie Harper and the chamber and Debbie and what she's done with her leadership to try to help economic development and through, um, with this, as well as Chairman Sam of the IDA and along with the hard work of your legal staff, uh, Sam and Megan and as well as Mr. Kerr. Um, so we are grateful, um, for these tough decisions. This is all new roads for us and, um, with, this is a new path that we're all going on with economic development, but, um, we can assure, uh, that we will continue on a successful one and continue promoting Newton County and One Newton as we move forward. So thank you for your time tonight and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Commissioner Mason?
Did you want Commissioner Edwards to go first?
I was changing it a little bit.
Oh, okay. I like change. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, tonight has been a great night. Um, I think we've done some great work. I think we've made some great decisions. Um, I'm rather proud of the decisions that we made. Um, yes, it took us some time, um, to work through each agenda item, uh, but I think, uh, we did our best as a board to be as thorough as possible uh, and to make the best decisions possible. Um, I think, uh, with our decision, uh, with economic development, if, if we, you know, see how these, um, next twelve months go, um, to kinda see if what we've put in place really is the most effective or if we need to come back to the table and possibly revamp, um, that. Um, I think that'll definitely be something that as a board, we should keep our eye on. Work closely with Chairman Sims, um, with the IDA, um, with Sarah and Dave. You know, just kinda see, because this is, like Sarah said, this is brand new for us. Um, I'm excited that we were, we made the decision to come back and really fund economic development because I believe that our ROI is gonna be probably better than we may see now. Um, and so that's my expectation that our return on the investment is gonna be greater uh, than what we're investing initially. I see the momentum moving in that department, um, and in that area, um, of our county really being developed. And so I think we don't wanna lose that momentum that we have. And so I think we really made a great decision tonight. Uh, and I wanna thank this board for coming together and doing that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna switch gears and go to property taxes. Uh, you probably, you guys, I don't know if I copied everybody. I, I know I copied the chairman on what Megan had advised we could possibly do in terms of our property taxes going forward. How there's, each year seems to be so many outliers of, of outrageous property value increases while, while it's obvious the average is eight percent, um, across the county. Um, there are others with much, much more. And I'm, I, and I'm not, not smart enough to figure out how those, those algorithms and those formulas work. Uh, I just, I just know it seems like every year there's some big time exceptions. So Megan had a plan. Um, I'm hoping I copied everybody, but if I, I will tomorrow. Megan, Megan says there are counties out there that use what they call a floating, um, a floating homestead exemption where there's a, there's a baseline value placed on a property. And then when that property sells at some time in the future, the calculation adds, the, a calculation figures the total amount of property taxes on that property or that would have increased, that increase that would have existed. Uh, and then the, the seller, the, the buyer pays that, uh, property tax based on the sales price, if I, if I understood Megan correctly. I'll ask for a work session, Mr. Chairman, if you would. I, I would like, you know, you, I know you gotta get a couple of other commissioners that may wanna do it, but, uh, I would request a work session that, where we can look into implementing that in Newton County and in the future, if possible, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would definitely agree to do a work session to, so that we can get the information. We definitely, I mean, we definitely need that information, so, um, I would definitely do a work session. Definitely. Um, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my, my comment this, this evening is, is one, uh, sweet and simple. Is, uh, just go when I came on commission, I was, uh, uh, pulled aside as the, the meeting had ended and it was, uh, two gentlemen, Mr. Todd and Mr. Mitchell. And they were two gentlemen who always came to the meeting. Man, and I tell you, they was raised some hell. Uh, Paul Turner and William. And, um, he said something that evening to me that really stuck in my mind. He said, "You're doing a whole lot of voting on stuff." I said, "Well, yeah, you know, I'm voting on..." He asked, and the question that he posed to me is, "Would you spend your money that way?" And I looked at him and smiled and I said, "I don't think I would spend my money that way." So, uh, uh, my commission comment this evening is that we, we spend our money the way that we're voting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Cowan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, appreciate everybody's, uh, good discussion tonight on economic development. I know that's been a tough subject. Uh, don't mean to be, um, uh, antagonistic or anything like that. That wasn't my purpose. I just wanted, I just like things to be as simple as possible. Um, and again, I think, uh, having them working for the IDA is a good thing. Um, I don't think it's the best thing to be working for, uh, the county or having the county manager have to worry about that. So I do appreciate the, um, patience and the, uh, good discussion we had on that issue. So just wanna let everybody know, I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I will agree with having that work session. I think that's a great idea. Um, so I'm gonna change the subject altogether. This week for many of our students in Newton County is graduation week and they get, and they're, they're missing out on a traditional graduation. And many of them are going to participate in virtual graduations. Well, I had the privilege last Saturday of participating in a graduation parade it, through one of my neighborhoods. It was perhaps one of the most enjoyable experiences I've ever had because it was truly, um, that all the, the neighbors came out to the end of the street and they were waving as the graduates drove through the neighborhood. We had the sheriff and the, and the fire, um, fire services had a fire truck. It was a real community spirit and what we saw was this excitement in a time when graduation has taken a completely different turn for these graduates of 2020. So I would suggest that all of us reach out to, uh, these young people in our, in our districts and find a way to congratulate them, find a way to make something special for them because this is, this is an exciting time, whether they're graduating from high school or college or eighth grade or, or, um, kindergarten. It's a big deal and, um, there, you know, there, it's a different experience for them this year. And so whatever we can do to make it, uh, a memorable one, I think is important.
Thank you. Thank you. Um. I'm sorry. Okay, um, thank you. Um, let me just say this, I, I'm, I'm, I'm tired tonight, but I am excited because I saw tonight what I believe in. I'm gonna take some heat from this and I, I, I don't, I don't, it's okay. I don't care. Um, because I saw a board who I think is a, a great board operate in the element. I seen a commissioner, uh, District One Commissioner fight for what he believe in. I saw a commis, Commissioner Two Commissioner fight for what he believe in. Commissioner Three Commissioner fight for what she believe in. Uh, Commissioner Four Commissioner, uh, fight for what he believe in. And the Commissioner Five, uh, Commissioner, I saw him being an attorney. Uh, no, I saw him fight for what he believe in as well. So, um, and I saw a county manager who stood up for what, what, what he thought was best. So I am excited about, uh, this board, um, and the things that this board can give the country. I know I'm gonna take some heat from that, uh, but it's okay. And what I believe, uh, I think we got a good board. And guys, we do have executive session. We would not be taking a vote. Um. We do have an executive session. We will not be taking a vote. Uh. Um, yeah, let's go ahead and do executive session. This is something that's been working on for months. We will not be taking a vote again. Y'all guys, okay with it? I know it's late. We can put it on, we can put it, we can do it in the next, in the next board meeting.
Well, it looks like somebody's been waiting a long time to participate in this.
I see Aaron Miles back there.
Let's, let's do it.
I see myself there. I've been summoned.
Okay, let's, 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 let's do the board. Let's do, let's do executive session. Brian, can you put everybody who is not going into the executive session, um, in a?
Yeah, if you give me a few minutes, if you give me a few minutes, I can go through and put them on hold. Um, the board will be coming back out, but they will not be taking a vote, just to adjourn. Uh, and if you, before I do that, if you want to give the reason for executive session?
We will, uh, land acquisition, will not be taking a vote though.
Karen Baynes, you want to take the motion to go into executive?
Those should be going to executive session.
This is a motion by Commissioner Edwards. And second by?
District Two.
Second mission, Commissioner Mason. Uh, all in favor?
Aye, District One.
Aye, District Two.
Aye, District Three.
Aye, District Four. Aye, District Five.
We are moving into the executive session. Thank you. We are in our regular meeting. I seek a motion that we adjourn.
Saw moved, District One.
District Two.
Motion.
I just, it's been a late night. I know you say, sometimes I say District One, sometimes I say District Two.
All in favor?
Aye, District One.
Aye, District Two.
Aye, District Three. Who made the second?
Who knows?
Aye, District Six. Aye, District Five.
Good Lord.
Um, I think, uh, Commissioner Edwards made it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
If we stay on ten more minutes, we've been here six hours.
Six hours. See you later, man. Yeah, and I told, hey, I made a promise to y'all that I wouldn't, we wouldn't do no six hour meeting.
Well, if you stay on for, uh, for twelve more minutes, I think you violate the Open Meetings Act. No one noticed a meeting for tomorrow, did they?
Hey, seriously though, thank, thank y'all. I know it's been a long night, but we greatly appreciate y'all.